Mara, you might want to mute yourself because all the noise is making you the star of the show.
Okay, let's see.
I was having difficulty signing in. I'm glad I made it.
Glad you made it too, Julie.
Yeah, my, I had to reboot my computer.
I'm just getting the, I got the livestream up and I'm just gonna put a note on Dread Strong, so people know where to find it if they have any trouble.
Mara, I hope you're going somewhere cool.
I'm in the UP right now.
Oh, cool.
So yeah, super cool. Super, super cool.
Well, say hi to the bears and the porcupines.
That's exactly where we're going, is the Porcupine Mountains.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
We backpacked up there one time and we're quite amazed to find out we had to walk across the river in order to keep on the trail.
So are we live at this point?
Yeah, I just need a quick minute to post a link, but we are live.
Yeah, we're live. It's being streamed on the website and we have about thirteen hundred participants signed up. There's five hundred and fifty logged in already.
Jason, are you just connecting by audio tonight? There you are. Great. Good to see you.
You too. For anybody joining, this is set up as a webinar, so the board members and any presenters are on the screen and everybody else is muted. We'll have, as the meeting gets going, I'll explain the process.
Great. So it is six o'clock. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Dexter Community Schools Board of Education on Monday, August 3rd, 2020, to order. First, I'd like to welcome any community members or staff members in attendance. Tonight's meeting is a unique format. It's both a working meeting of the Board of Education as well as a community forum to share the district's draft return to school plan. I'd like to provide a brief overview of the format for tonight's meeting. After some initial business of the Board approving past minutes and the agenda for tonight's meeting, as well as suspending one of our bylaws this evening. We will then move to Dr. Timis. We'll be presenting the draft of the district's return to school plan. Then there'll be an interactive Q and A with Dr. Timis, in which community members can send questions virtually through the chat or through some mechanism that Dr. Timis will describe. And then he will respond to those questions for about an hour or so. Then around 7:30, 7:45, we'll take a brief five-minute recess. And then when we reconvene, there will be a public participation opportunity. So this would be if any community member wants to make a statement beyond the questions that were part of the Q and A. And that will either be thirty minutes or depending on the number of individuals who would like to speak, we might extend it up to an hour. Then lastly, the Board will discuss the draft plan for approximately an hour or so. And we expect to conclude the meeting around 9:30, certainly ten o'clock at the very latest, but we'll strive for about 9:30. So with that, Ms. Vestegard, could you take the role?
Mrs. Bruterly?
Here.
Mr. Gold?
Here.
Mrs. Greater X?
Here.
Dr. Kipki?
Here.
Mr. Lundie?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
She had a family matter that needed immediate attention.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Present.
Mr. Naughton?
Here.
Ms. Sheham?
Here.
Then the next order of business is I would like to welcome our newest student school board member, Junior Aiden Naughton. Aiden, would you like to just tell us briefly something about yourself?
Sure, yes. Thank you. I've honored to have this position. I've gone into my junior year. I like being involved. For example, I'm on the Dexter High School Student Council. I'm also on the golf team and then I'm a student representative, I think I might have just said this, but the planning commission and then the, yeah, so that's about it.
Great. Well, welcome. We're happy to have you and hopefully you'll have a chance to connect with Anna and she can kind of fill you in on her first year on the Board, since you'll be serving for two years and we're happy to have you both. So Ms. Vestegard, would you like to administer the oath of office?
Actually, I get to do it.
Okay, great.
All right, Aiden, I need to, need you to raise your hand. All right, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this, the...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of School Trustee.
Of the Office of School Trustee.
Of the Dexter Community School District to the best of my ability.
Of the Dexter School District to the best of my ability.
You're official.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to review our virtual meeting procedures. We've done this for several months now, but just also for those community members that are connecting. Our virtual meeting procedures are a little different than when we met face to face. First, board members will be asked to state their name when making a motion for the benefit of the audience or when commenting. Some folks might be connecting just through audio, so it'd be helpful if you could state your name. All votes will be taken by roll call for clarity. I will strive to recognize board members by name before you speak, but in the event that I forget to do so, I'd encourage you to just introduce yourself at the beginning of your comments. Audience members are muted until they're recognized during the public participation portion of the meeting, then they will be unmuted during that portion. And individuals who do speak during the public participation will be asked to state their name and their address and the topic before speaking. Board members, just as a reminder, should refrain from using email, texting, instant messaging, or any other electronic form of communication with each other or members of the public during the meeting, and specifically refrain from using the chat box unless for some reason you need technical assistance to connect via audio or video. But in those cases, I would encourage you to reach out to Dr. Timis. But in general, any text message by a board member would be a violation to other board members, would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. At our last board meeting, I know one board member did send a message through the chat box and just a reminder, we should not be doing that. Nor at a previous meeting, I know there was one board member who posted on social media. So we should be fully engaged with the meeting at hand and should not be communicating through any other means during the meeting. Also encourage board members to conduct themselves in the same manner consistent with our in-person meetings. And then also during the Q and A section following Dr. Timis's presentation, individuals will have an opportunity, will it be a special, will it be the chat box, Dr. Timis, or will it be some other means?
There's a question and answer function on Zoom. We'll use that after the presentation to facilitate questions.
Okay, very good. So...
Trustee Reed is in the meeting now.
Oh, great.
Join, we don't have video, but we have audio.
Can I, should I make her a panelist?
I just did.
Okay.
Great. Okay, then our first matter of business is to improve, approve the minutes from our special meeting on July 13th as well as our regular meeting on July 13th. Would someone like to make a motion?
Hi, Dick Lundie, moved that the minutes for the two meetings be approved as presented.
I do, okay, second.
So trustee Lundie moved that the minutes be approved as presented with support from trustee Kipki. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Vestegard, will you do a roll vote, please?
Mrs. Bruterly?
Aye.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X? Dr. Kipki?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X, can you hear us?
I, it looks like your call dropped.
Okay.
So the minutes for both meetings were approved with what, I guess we had six individuals present. Well, wait just a minute. I can see that Mara is reconnecting. Hey, Mara, are you on the meeting? Hey, so we will move on. We will just, there will be only six people present for that vote, so they were passed unanimously. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
I, Elise Bruterly, moved that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I, Daryl Kipki, support.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any suggested changes? Okay, Ms. Vestegard, if you'll do a roll vote, please.
Mrs. Bruterly?
Aye.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X? Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Dr. Kipki?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye. Great. So next on the agenda is to suspend bylaw 0167.3, which is public participation. Typically, we have two opportunities for public participation, one at the beginning and one at the end of the meeting. But we would be setting that aside since we're allowing an hour or so of Q and A time and then we'll also allow the public participation to follow that. So if someone would like to make a motion?
Hi, Dick Lundie, moved that we suspend the bylaw.
Is there... And who was that?
Elise Bruterly, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion by Dick Lundie and a second by Elise Bruterly to approve the or suspend the bylaw 0167.3. Any discussion? Will you do a roll vote, please, Ms. Vestegard?
Mrs. Bruterly?
Aye.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Approve.
Yep, she, she texted me. Is that okay if we get to this point, if I read a text from her or...
And she just said approve.
Yep.
We're good.
Dr. Kipki?
Approve.
Mr. Lundie?
Approve.
Mrs. Reed?
Approve.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Prove. Very good. So now we are going to move into a school presentation of the return to school plan by Dr. Timis.
I want to start off by just saying thank you for the opportunity. We have about thirteen hundred participants signed up for this session. It's really unique to do it this way. We have about a thousand here right now. What I'm going to do is go through the presentation and then we'll have a couple interactive components and then we'll do Q, Q and A after presentation. There's a lot to consume in it. We are doing a meeting about the virtual or the home-based option on Thursday at 6:30 that'll go into details on the home-based option or the full virtual option. We're, I'll touch on it today, but there'd be more details on Thursday. So I'm gonna take the screen over and fill it with the presentation. Wanted to just thank everyone for joining us today. I hope that all of our families had the opportunity to spend some quality time as a family despite the obstacles of the pandemic. I've been impressed with the stories families have shared about their attempts to have some sense of normalcy this summer while also staying safe. The district has been working hard behind the scenes over the summer. I'd like to take a moment to thank district staff that have worked tirelessly over the summer to plan for your child's education. I want to say a big thank you to our buildings and ground staff who have had to retool and prepare for a significant uptick in cleaning requirements and have actually been painting our buildings in preparation for when our students re-enter the halls. Food and nutrition who have served over 230,000 meals. Central office staff who have continued to keep the district moving on the business end. Community Ed and Jenkins Early Childhood staff who have been operating a very small preschool in Camp Dexter all summer. The technology department who've been working miracles to prepare for increased tech demands this year and all of the other year-round staff who've been working hard to keep everything prepared for the fall. I'd also like to give another big thank you to our return to school planning team, which is a collective group of 2014 members that consists of teacher leaders, union leaders, transportation, technology administrators, who have all cut any vacation time short to come back to work and prepare for the pandemic, prepare when the pandemic began to spike again and changed the landscape yet again for the 2021 school year. When we left in June, I thought we had a good idea in what direction the pandemic was heading in this country and that has shifted in a dramatic fashion. I appreciate all of the effort that has taken place to put us in a position in the fall to provide education and support our kids while maintaining the safety of everyone. There's been an immense amount of work done this summer by our entire district staff and I've never been more proud of the commitment of our staff to your children. I know that last year presented a great deal of challenges and this summer is surreal in so many ways. We all are longing for a sense of normalcy. This is going to be a year that we all encounter many obstacles, many of which will be outside of our control. Luckily, we are part of a community that has a history of responding in the face of adversity and being creative when presented with challenges. I can't recall a time in my career where the decisions that we make for the upcoming school year have such large implications for families. The decisions that we make all have cost, have a cost attached to them, no matter what direction we move in relation to the pandemic. These costs are not solely financial costs. They are human cost and risk versus benefit. Weighing the cost and benefit of strategies for next year is something our administrative team has wrestled with all summer and has kept us up at night. I don't say that to garner sympathy, but to make it clear that we take the safety and education of your child very seriously as, as well as the way our decisions impact families. Our district has been very aggressive in reaching out to leaders from across the country, state, and around the world in an attempt to gain knowledge and strategies to implement this year. We have collaborated with other districts, educational professional organizations, researchers, medical professionals, health departments, and large businesses to glean knowledge about what has worked and what has failed. The safety and education of your children has been our number one priority in developing our plan. We're fortunate in one regard that we do not start until after Labor Day. We will have the opportunity to see how things go for other districts outside of our state before we attempt to start the school year. We anticipate that the plan we made at this point in time will evolve as we watch other districts open in others, in other states and some who open in mid-August in Michigan. By September 8th, we will all know the impact of the school's opening and any potential impact of the direction of transmission rates. I'm going to share with you a slide deck that our district planning team spent countless hours creating this summer in preparation for the school year. This slide deck is our plan to provide the best possible education and support for our kids while also taking into consideration everyone's safety. I'd like to preface that this plan is a draft and we anticipate that it will evolve from your feedback tonight as well as the ever-changing landscape we are working within. So as we get started in the plan, I want to start by hearing your thoughts. So we're gonna do what's called a thought exchange. If you have another device, so if you have a cellphone or an iPad, et cetera, if you hover it over the QR code, it'll take you directly to a website to start answering this question. And the question we want to start with is what is on the top of your heart and mind as we plan for the next few months? You can also go to this website, tejoin.com and type in the code. I'm going to change screens real quick so that I can turn it on here and if you don't mind hovering over, we have ninety-four people have already hovered over. Hover over that QR code or go to tejoin.com and type in the code and just share what is on the top of your heart and mind as we plan for the next few months. And after you've shared your thoughts, please take some time and rate other thoughts. We're gonna take about four minutes total. At about two minutes, I'll shift over to a, a different screen. By the number of participants, I've never done one this large, so we'll see if this, I'm sure the system can handle it, but it should get moving pretty quickly here. Looks like about four hundred and fifty participants have already started and their thoughts are logged in. In about twenty seconds, I'll, twenty or thirty seconds, I'll flip over to another screen so we can see what the thoughts are. If you haven't had a chance to scan that QR code, just open your camera and flip over it and it should take you right to the site. Or you can go to tejoin.com and type in that number. I'm gonna flip screens so we can see the thoughts. So up at the top so far is safety of our, for our students and teachers, safety, safety of staff and students, keeping everyone safe both physically and mentally, safety for all staff and students, safety of children and staff, safety of my children's family members or grandparents if they happen to transmit the disease to them, students have safety, lots of safety. My kids and the Dexter staff. So if you could take a little more time and just keep entering your thoughts and rating others. The system will continue to move up. It looks like most people have rated something based on the, based on the graphic. It looks like most of them are on safety, quality of education, health of students and staff, education and safety. Lots of safety. Getting kids to be able to learn. Okay, about forty-five more seconds. Just wanted to be able to kind of get a gauge on where people's hearts and minds are before we get started.
What is the graphic on the left of the comments?
That shows, so the little bump comment call-outs are the actual thoughts and all of the purple little people are people and it shows what they rated, which thoughts they rated. So like these people right here haven't rated any. These have rated some and then it starts to show clusters of who's like thinking. There's so many about safety, some, it's, that seems to be the trend. Okay, doing right by our students and staff, child's health and wellbeing. It looks like the top thoughts are all related to safety. Where we go. All right, so... So as we look at our planning for the year, safety has been one of the key drivers. What we know as far as the realities for 2020, 2021 are, they're fairly sobering. The reality is that school will not open as normal. In no scenario that we've worked through, given the information that we have available as of today, do we envision bringing all thirty-seven hundred students into our doors on September 8th like we normally would. We know that schools around the country and even in the state are opening in the next coming weeks. So we, by September 8th, we should have a pretty good gauge on how that went for those schools and what the potential risk is to our students, families, and staff. As a district, our planning team doesn't really believe that we should allow our kids to be the test subjects. We won't allow, we won't know if we overreacted or not, but we would definitely know if we underreacted and we feel the risk is too high not to be thoughtful and purposeful. The context we're working in is that we're trying to educate within a public health crisis. Our priority is to make sure that we educate our students while keeping our students, families, and safe, and staff safe and healthy. We are not concerned about political debates. We're, our priority is how to educate our students while keeping our students, families, and staff safe. Just the other day, we had a local youth organization that had to cancel their summer season because we had some kids that tested positive for the virus. Local high school teams have had to quarantine and shut down. University athletic teams are already quarantined and the Major League Baseball made it one game for some of the teams. So we also know that over fifty thousand university students are moving into the county in the next few weeks from around the country and the world. Their impact in our county will be known by early September. As we work through our planning considerations, we've been working through the governor's return to school roadmap, which the roadmap requires us to build a plan for phases one through three, phase... Which the roadmap requires us to build a plan for phases one through three, phase four and phase five. According to the Michigan Safe Start Plan, we're in region one. Located with Oakland, Wayne and Macomb Counties, Livingston, Monroe, et cetera. Um, we are currently in phase four. Of the governor's Michigan Safe Start Plan. So our requirement to open would be, we would have to, if we opened school today and we were still in phase four. Or in September eighth, if we are still in phase four, would be to follow the requirements and the return to school roadmap for phase four. So the majority of this presentation is going to be about phase four, which is where we are right now. Later in the presentation, we talk about phases one through three, that is if the region is placed back in phases one through three. And the last part of the draft is phase five, which actually is the easier phase for us. Because the restrictions and requirements are so much less. I don't plan to go over every slide, but I've shared and, but the slide was shared ahead of time. Overall, the slide deck is really arranged around phase four. So our considerations, a little over a week ago, we asked our families to share their thoughts if they had to make a decision tomorrow. Overall, here's what the data showed regarding this snapshot in time. And this wasn't meant to be, to give exactly what a family would want to do. It was meant to just give us a snapshot. Overall, the data showed that we had about forty-two percent of our families wanted a face-to-face option. Thirty-three percent a hybrid and twenty-three percent wanted a full online option. After a final plan is presented and approved by the board on August tenth. We'll ask our parents to make final selections that will impact our class list and schedules in preparation for September eighth. This will give us enough time to make the changes to support all of our students and their choices. And as you can see from the feedback and the choices do range a little bit as the grade levels change. In the return to school roadmap, it clearly outlines practices that are requirements, strong recommendations or recommendations. Some of the requirements or challenges we are still working through. For example, the cleaning requirements state. That student desks must be wiped down with either an EPA-approved disinfectant or diluted bleach solution after every class period. As a district, we have about a hundred and eighty classrooms with students in them at any given time. When we're fully in session. We have about two hundred and forty different classrooms that the kids move to throughout the day. The APA-approved disinfectant requires PPE to be worn, which are gloves, surgical masks and facial. And in order for it to kill the virus, it has a ten-minute dry time, the ones that some, the chemicals we have on, in stock. There are other chemicals that we can get a hold of that have a four-minute drive time. Um, so one of the challenges with this, if we keep the kids in the same class all day, it's much easier. When we get to middle and high school and the kids' schedules are not the same throughout the day, that's where the challenges start to arise. Assemblies of more than one class are prohibited. This is what impacts lunch. For buses, masks are to be worn by students at all times on the bus. We already have a shortage of drivers, about eighty-four percent of our bus drivers are over age fifty and about fifty-three percent are over age sixty. With the recent shutdown. We have a challenge in terms of hiring new drivers and getting their testing and training completed in time. We're working through it, but it's been a little more challenging this summer than usual. The uh, weather permitting, we're supposed to keep doors and windows open in the vehicle. And face coverings must be worn in all classes on buses and in all common areas, cafeterias, hallways and auditoriums by both students and staff is a requirement. As we hear that other high schools are opening up, one challenge that we've heard is that we have some area height. In this county yet, but some in the state that are planning to have students clean the desks. If we look at. That concept, they're really ignoring the requirement in or in violation of the safety standards. These are chemicals that we train our staff to use and given our current cleaning options available to us. They're really not appropriate or ethical for students to be using. In the return to school roadmap, the strong recommendations or recommendations, they strongly recommend a six-foot physical distancing of six to eight. Which puts us at about six to eight students per classroom. This really cannot be done at scale throughout the district based on square footage of classrooms. I put a stock photo of what it looks like to spread a classroom out with six-foot distancing. Um, if cafeterias must be used, mealtime should be staggered to create seating arrangement with six feet of distance between students. We've been measuring out spaces to see how we can make that work. And then family members and other guests will not be permitted in any buildings in order to maintain our safety protocols. Other challenges we're working through are substitute teachers. We already have a substitute teacher shortage. So one of the questions we've been wrestling with is do we bring in a substitute teacher who's traveled to and from four or five local districts in the last week? Or do we just hire a group of subs and if we don't have enough one day, what do we do with that class? Uh, quarantine issues. If a staff member is quarantined, whether we're virtual or face-to-face, who teaches the class? After contact tracing, what's the impact on classroom attendance? When you really break down the quarantine, and this is, we're learning more as we go through this. If you have a family of five and you have one person in the family that's exposed. So suppose it's a teacher and they were exposed and forced to quarantine. And they have children at home. Once you start the dominoes of a ten to fourteen day quarantine and then anybody else showing symptoms or not, et cetera. It could be multiple weeks before they come out, we're out of the quarantine. Uh, specials area teachers. In general, our specials area teachers see hundreds of students per day. So for example, elementary art, music, phys ed, media and language. We could at the elementary, we can have the teachers travel, we just need to figure out how to make sure they're not exposed to too many kids at any given time. Or in any given day, um. So what we'll probably do is we're wrestling with how to utilize their spaces. So to go into classrooms in the elementary and then to use the outdoors after, otherwise. Choir and band classes, we're still, we're navigating through a pandemic, that's a respiratory virus. The um, there was a study on band instruments and with choir to show what spacing we would need, et cetera. So we've gone through, our Creekside Band usually has about two hundred or more students, Mill Creek about a hundred and fifty or more in high school, about two hundred or more. So we've gone through spaces and schedules to see how many students can fit in the rooms. So when we get to that fifty percent mark, we're pretty close to what we can do with the six-foot spacing and choir and band. But it's gonna impact in a couple of the classes, it's impact scheduling significantly and how we operate. Um, and we also need to make sure that we have the right instruments in the room so the space sounds correct. HVAC, we have gone through the analysis of our HVAC systems and we are capable of moving a hundred percent outside air. When we do that, it won't heat or cool the room, so there's a trade-off. Uh, we've evaluated installing MERV thirteen or higher filters that could filter out the virus. We use Wiley as an example, is about fifty-five thousand dollars to install. And the filters are estimated to be replaced about every three months, about seven thousand a piece, so we're getting around eighty thousand for the year. When we looked across the whole district, it was about a million dollar project. The realities of this is we would need to get engineering design formalized, we would need to do, have. The million dollars, if we use bonds, we'd have to go through the bond process, we definitely have to bid it. And then there's a lifetime and install, so we're, this is not something that can be done any timely manner. It's probably winter through the spring to be able to actually pull this off if we did it. We analyzed our classrooms, we used Beacon which has the largest square footage on average of any rooms. We found that if we put twelve students in a room, they, we can't get the six-foot radius. But this is about what it looks like, six, we can guarantee the six-foot radius. One of the recommenda, or strong recommendations, and it might even be a requirement of the return to school roadmap, is having six-foot spacing in the hallways. So, and one-way traffic, so we laid out what it would take in the Beacon hallway for one class to move down the hall. So it takes the entire hallway for one class to move down. Um, which tells us as far as traffic flow, how we're gonna have to set this up. Buses, we're still analyzing what we can do with buses, with six-foot radius, a bus can hold seventeen students roughly. Uh, but there's no way to get them past the driver, so we have to work through that. We have used the Path to Zero for Schools' Recommendations of Harvard Global Health Institute. Um, this was a project. That provided thoughtful methods for schools to safely get back to school into a face-to-face setting. Using their model, they identify the first, second and third priority for reopening for a region in yellow. So currently, Washington County is in yellow. Their recommendations are her first, the first priority are the elementary grades and in-person special education services at levels pre-K through eight. Second priority is grade six through eight and special education services at the high school. Their third priority was, um, after we've completed the resilient learning space work. And allocated K eight that we then work on nine through twelve, open on a hybrid schedule. So that helped us create what we are using as our draft plan for phase four. And our goal is, and we call it the homeroom option, so we're gonna have two options we'll talk about, the homeroom and the home-based. Home-based is easy to understand, it's a full online program. That students would sign up for, for ideally a semester or the year. Um, but they could in elementary transition and earlier depending on the timing and the situations. Um, but what we, our goal would be a hundred percent face-to-face learning option. It offered to any interested family. So we would start on September eighth with remote learning for all students. Except for our students with the highest instructional needs, which are, we have a small number that we need to work through the protocols to get them safely in the building. And the remote learning would be at home and/or in our buildings, it's phased in for safety protocols. We'd also have the full online program available for, available for any interested family. We would then look for fourteen days of local and county data showing a consistent decline in new cases and work with the local health department. And that would move us to step two, where we would phase in our K, or our young fives through fourth grade students. At twenty-five percent per day for a week, then fifty percent per day. The next week and then work our way in so that they could attend daily. And we would continue the remote learning for everyone else. Even the other seventy-five percent, the one week of K four, or young fives or fourth, fourth grade students. And the other fifty percent as we phase it, we would continue the remote learning. Um, and we would continue the online program. Then we would move to step three, where we would get all of our young fives through fourth grade students in school every day. And then we would start working on fifth through eighth in a hybrid, so twenty-five percent one day, one day per week. Or the first week, then fifty percent and move ourselves towards a hundred. We would continue the remote learning nine, twelve in a full online option. Then step four, we would move to all of our young fives through eighth grade students attending daily. Then we'd start to phase into high school on a similar model. And then we would eventually get to all students attending daily. So the concept here is we are looking to start with our most vulnerable students by working out protocols and procedures. To protect their safe re-entry into the buildings. We cannot morally or ethically bring in all of our students into buildings without protecting our most vulnerable students first. This phase allows us to work out the procedures and protocols to protect these students and set the process to bring in all of our students safely. The protocols and requirements to ensure safety of our students, families and staff will require a significant education of our students and scaling. This plan allows us to transition our students while teaching them a new way of doing school. So when we bring in the smaller numbers, we can review the protocols, et cetera, so that the kids truly understand how we have to operate to be safe. This is the same plan just laid out in more of a linear process. So our options for fall. Our two options for the fall are planned to be the homeroom model or the home-based model. The homeroom model would follow the phased-in plan on the previous slides and ensure a safe transition back into the buildings. If parents choose the home-based model, Dexter Community Schools will provide a full virtual program using Dexter Community Schools teachers. I'll share more details on both models as we move forward into the next slides. So technology will be a key component. So we will onboard our students and families starting the week before school is scheduled to start, so the week of September first. With distribution similar to last spring. However, we'll also provide significant parent onboarding to understand the platforms and the technology. Feedback from the families after the spring was clear that we needed to streamline our platforms for student, family and educator ease of use. Since May, we've been working with our staff to move to Seesaw as a platform in young fives through second grade. And Canvas in grades three through twelve. Summit classrooms will still utilize Summit in grades five through eight. We would onboard families so they understood they only need to log into one platform for their child. And it's specific by grade level. Uh, we'd also plan to run open houses during the week of September first, but operate those virtually. Our plan is to offer a full load of courses and curriculum for our students. When we phase into the buildings, we'll run a shorter day for students. This will allow our staff to have time for preparation and support of the students who are virtual on those days. Remember that we're going twenty-five percent of the students attending, so the other seventy-five percent would be virtual, so we need time for our staff to teach those students. And then fifty percent the next week, so we need time for our stu, staff to work with those students. Uh, we will also need to stagger the entry and dismissal to not have classes mixing, et cetera. So we would look to operate when we get face-to-face from nine to two, when students are phased in. We'll continue to provide all of our support services and will require PPE for staff and students. This includes all students wearing masks on the bus and in school. We will build in mask breaks, but the requirement to enter our facilities and stay in our facilities will be to wear a mask. Uh, of specific note, I just want to point this out, social distancing is not possible in the classrooms. Once we increase the number of students transitioned into the buildings. It is merely mathematical. There isn't enough space in a classroom or a school to provide a six-foot distance at all times. Other considerations, in the event of a member of a homeroom family, staff or student tests positive for COVID nineteen. The school will follow state guidelines, health department guidance and district guidelines regarding exposure. And quarantine upon notification. This is outlined on page twenty-five of the return to school roadmap and we have additional details that we're working out into the detailed plan. That must be submitted and approved, um, next week. Instruction will continue in a modified format during any quarantine. So now details for the elementary schools. We would continue with the homeroom model or the home-based model, it's a parent choice. Starting September eighth, we would run our normal school day remotely. Unlike spring, we will have daily live lessons with classes. The feedback we received from families after the spring was that you wanted more structure. Our staff also asked for more structure. However, we do not want to have kids sitting in Zoom sessions all day. This conceptual schedule allows for check-ins, mini lessons and student individual work opportunities. When we begin transitioning elementary students into the buildings, the homeroom model will include the following. We'll maximize our instructional time initially in smaller groups on an alternating schedule during school hours. And allow us to safely bring in all students at one time. Students would remain in one classroom throughout the day with exception to recess lunch. And one-to-one or small group instruction or other outdoor instruction. Students will be required to practice social distancing, or not required to practice social distancing will. But will be required to wear face coverings while in the student's family classroom. Students will also need to wear a face covering on the bus, in hallways and in common areas. Special areas and support teachers will come to the homeroom to take students outside. Staff will wear personal protective equipment during those class experiences. Students will enjoy recess opportunity with only their classmates, classmates. And we will serve meals according to the return to school roadmap guidelines. If teachers team teach, the teachers will move, the students will not. The amount of instructional time is shortened based on the structure of the school building to allow time for safer transitions to and from and in and out of the building. When twenty-five percent of our homeroom students are able to attend school in the building, group A students will attend on Monday or Thursday. As assigned by the school, we'll try to organize families K twelve or households as best as possible. With scheduled virtual learning on the other four days. Group B students will attend school on Tuesdays or Friday as assigned by the school with scheduled virtual learning on the other four days. When we get to fifty percent of our homeroom students attending on a day, group A students are on Monday, Monday and Thursday. In virtual, the other three days, group B students are on Tuesdays and Fridays and virtually the other days. This allows Wednesdays for all students to provide opportunities for virtual learning. Parent-teacher conference to ensure students have adequate supports and allows us for deeper cleaning. These were considerations as we built our plan, we looked at equity, flexibility, how to get face-to-face instruction, how to do it safely. And how to address social and emotional learning. When we look at the elementary school model, we also have the home-based model, which is completely online. So the elementary home-based model. Is the virtual model. We're going to hold an information night on the virtual option for families on Thursday, August sixth at six-thirty PM via Zoom. There's a login information on the website. So families who select the home-based instruction option will follow the district procedures. Regarding registration for this choice, we'll set up a survey the week of August tenth to be able to outline the. Regarding registration for this choice, we'll set up a survey the week of August tenth to be able to outline the choices. The virtual instruction will be provided through a variety of formats with accountability measures in place. To make sure that we have progress monitoring and academic growth. Virtual support will be provided through formats like telephone calls, emails, virtual platform meetings. We will be supporting students' social emotional needs. Using a variety of formats. Students, and this is a K twelve example, but it does kind of outline how we're going to do this. Students in grades, young fives through eighth grade will be taught by Dexter teachers using one of a variety of online resources along with their own teacher lessons. Students in a high school will be taught by a combination of Dexter teachers. Some of our high school students, many of them actually take Washington Community College courses. And we have about two hundred plus students a year that take Michigan virtual courses, depending on their particular schedules. So this, we would operate similar to how we have it scheduled or set up now. Students will participate in core content or and elective courses. Building administrators and counselors will help determine which courses are appropriate for students. The timing for transition back to in-person or the homeroom model. For grades, young fives through eighth will be dependent on the students' needs in the curriculum. For nine through twelve, the transition is best at the semester. To make sure that students don't lose credits towards graduation. Other, the content will be delivered using various models and learning. To target all learning styles, the content delivery is a mix of synchronous, which is real-time virtual instruction. Small group that could be in-person or virtually. And asynchronous, which is when students work at their own pace on their own schedule. So it would be a combination of the three. Wednesdays will include a synchronous structure in which all students are expected to attend and participate. Courses and subjects that require course materials will have the resources available at no cost and our instructors will be available daily. When we look at the intermediate school, so we look at Creekside. We will, we will continue to offer the homeroom model or the home-based model. Again, it's a parent choice. The homeroom model. When we first start off remotely, we'll run during the normal school day from eight to two fifty-two. It'll start with synchronous meetings. It'll have some synchronous instruction, some specials and daily work. We'll keep the meetings into smaller chunks of time so that students aren't frozen to the screen all day. Wednesdays will be opportunity for us to clean and have scheduled shorter, smaller group times, et cetera, get our teachers together to be able to organize curriculum, things like that. When we move to the twenty-five percent student return, this would be what the schedule would look like. So pinnacle students. Would be in one, would be broken in half and summit students would be broken in half to be able to work through so we can make it work. We are trying to gauge or set this up so that families or households will be on the same days across the district. When we move to fifty percent, this is what the model would look like. A students would attend on Mondays and Thursdays. B students would move to Tuesdays and Fridays. Virtual teachers are responsible for students who are all online. However, at the same time, when the A students are attending, the B students are learning in a remote setting. Our stu- our teachers will still be providing lessons and guidance there. So that's why the change in the school day when we move to this model. We'll try to keep our groups of students at the fifty percent ratio at ten to fifteen per class. We'll keep the kids in the same classroom all day. The teachers will rotate classrooms to minimize exposure. We'll cover the core instruction and the specials. We'll have social emotional learning embedded within the curriculum. In a Wednesday, the teachers will have virtual office hours, collaborative planning, professional development, et cetera, and deep cleaning. The homeroom schedule will still follow the homeroom offering. We still have, we'll meet the IEP requirements and accommodations on five oh four accommodations. Our counselors or support staff, teaching staff and administrators continue to work on social emotional needs of students who are both virtual or in-person. When we move to the home-based model, which is the virtual model. We will offer both the summit and pinnacle options for our students as selected. Either one, content will be delivered and using various modes of learning. We'll have a mix of synchronous, which is real-time virtual instruction, small group and asynchronous instruction where students work at their own pace. Wednesdays will include a synchronous structure in which all students are expected to attend and participate. If we have course materials that are needed, we will supply those at no cost and instructors will be available for families and students. Again, the factors we use to, to work through the planning. For the secondary schools, Mill Creek and Dexter High School, we will still offer, we'll continue to offer the homeroom model and the home-based model, again, parent choice. Mill Creek, when we start remotely at the start of the year, this would be a, it's scheduled without the exact times, but they'd go from eight to two fifty-two. Where we'd give structure for the kids' day and for staff. Wednesdays again would be mentoring time, student work time, virtual office hours. When we move to the twenty-five and fifty percent, this is what it'll look like, well, face-to-face and virtual days, similar to the other grade levels. After we transition all the students into that fifty percent model, this is what the days would look like. We'd have core instruction, enrichment lunch and then exploratory. It would follow that process or that, that sequence. On virtual day support, students will have multiple contacts from school staff during the three virtual days. Students with siblings in the same school, including children or blended families. Be placed in the same cohort as much as possible. We're really going to work hard to make that happen to ease childcare transportation and scheduling. Departments and teams will have a dedicated virtual period each day that'll allow our teachers to provide instructional support and services to the cohort of students. Students who need additional interventions will be given supplemental support in a virtual setting. Our counselors and mentor teachers will provide social emotional support regularly. Wednesdays again gives us the flexibility to make changes and to work collaboratively and to set up individual meetings. We'll try to get small groups to ten to fifteen students per class. The groups will remain in the same classroom for the day. The teachers will rotate classrooms. So Mill Creek has a unique design. That was set up to do team teaching, so we're going to utilize that design to the best of its potential. High school credits, Spanish and French will be offered during exploratory period for eighth grade. We'll still work and provide the right services for our special ed, our RTI and our English language learners. And every student will be assigned a mentor. When we transition to the buildings, instructional time will be from nine to two. That'll allow us to develop a staggered entry and staggered dismissal so that we don't have six hundred students walking in and out, once we get all the students in at the same time. At the high school, again, we'll offer the homeroom and the home-based model. When we start off with the homeroom model, the students with the highest instructional needs will be in person. The majority of high school students will participate in home-based virtual education. Some of the most vulnerable students will attend face-to-face. The teachers are teaching students, their students virtually, but the teachers may be in the buildings. If they needed the access to equipment or et cetera. So when we move, start the year, we'd be on this remote schedule from eight to two fifty-two. And in the morning, there'd be specific classes per day. So on Mondays, it'd be first, third and fifth, Tuesday, second, fourth and sixth. With time to go face or to do synchronous instruction with the full class or asynchronous mixed in, so students work independently. Step two, when we move to twenty-five percent of the buildings, we're building, we're going to break the students into four cohorts. We've already been breaking down right now and there is no good software to do it, so we're having to do it by hand. The students' schedules, we've. Isolate students that have siblings or other students in the same household in the district. We're working with that group first to see what their schedules break out. As you remember, in high schools. Students don't travel with the same kids all day, so reducing the numbers is mathematical. It's a, it's a pretty good sized puzzle. Each cohort will attend in-person one school day a week while we bring the twenty-five percent in and work out the logistics. The other four days a week will be virtual. Every Wednesday, the students will have scheduled virtual office hours with their teachers. And students will be expected to actively participate in synchronous and asynchronous learning as it applies to all their classes. Grades will be given. High school, twenty-five percent of homework, homework schedule will look like this. This will be week two, when we move to fifty percent. Students will go to first, third and fifth on the first day of the week. They'll go to second, fourth and sixth on the other day of the week. And then when we, looking from a student perspective, we get to fifty percent. And from the start of the year, students will take six credits over the course of the year. We'll do our best to arrange for students to attend consortium if that's part of their schedule. We value consortium for our students. We know that our students in building trades, cosmetology, welding, et cetera, they have seat time requirements and we're working as a group, the superintendents and the principals. Of the consortium are the governing body for the consortium. We're working actively to try to work out the logistics to make that happen. The course offerings are the same, although some students may opt for a hundred percent online. So what that means is that if whatever the students selected in their schedules. Going into this year, thinking it was going to be face-to-face from day one, the course offerings will be the same. We're not changing courses. Student groupings, we're trying to put siblings and same households together. Cohort A is Monday and Thursday, B is Tuesday and Friday. No in-person classes are scheduled on Wednesdays. Students are expected to actively participate in synchronous and asynchronous learning as it applies to their grades and their classes and assignments are graded, grades are given. It is normal school. In-person instruction or educational will be an anchor for students. And that's what'll develop the positive relationship with their teachers. From a teacher perspective, they'll have three sections per teacher four days a week of about twelve to fifteen students per section on average. Some classes will be larger, some will be smaller. Staff are scheduling virtual office hours. They'll have a hundred, a hundred and ten minutes per class period. What the reasoning for this is if we have to wipe desks every time they move classes, we need to limit the number of transitions. Some of our teachers will be teaching a hundred percent virtually, depending on which courses students choose for virtual. The consortium, which is our career technical ed courses. We are working, the students do attend usually in hours one through three. And that's generally two to three days. That'll be generally two days, two to three days per work, per week under this model. We'll figure out how to get them transportation, depending on the numbers of which classes and what school or location they need to get to. The homeroom schedule, we will provide services for IEP and five oh four students. Our counseling staff will continue to work and our support staff and teaching staff will work on the social emotional needs of our students. Our staff will be managing many moving parts of the day that we've never had to manage. So the monitoring, record keeping, managing students or additional duties above and beyond what they normally would. They are used, they've always managed those aspects, but it's been such a routine. It hasn't needed as much direct assistance as it'll need. Whenever, if we get into any point of an intermittent closure, then instruction will continue virtually. Again, these were the driving factors and areas we looked at as we planned. For virtual instruction for secondary schools, so this is the home-based model. Same, same basic structure as we, I've talked in the last several buildings. District phase one through three plan. This is where we're all locked down. So we'd be back at virtual instruction, grades would be given. And we would, we're said, we've been working with our staff all summer to be able to get set, to be able to do this at any point. The virtual instruction instructional time will be maximized. We have everything aligned, will be aligned to standards and our curriculum with high-quality instructional resources. Our staff will be doing the teaching. We plan to assess our students and benchmark during the first few weeks of school, just to get an idea of where they are in terms of reading and math. Progress monitoring will continue at all grade levels and teachers will assess the quality of student work, provide feedback and grades. The array of schedules during the, as of September eighth are listed on this slide, just in case you wanted one slide to look at, to make it easier for multiple kids. When we look, we will have attendance and grades, we'll have communication that'll be set up in several model mediums. Social emotions, support and technology, we've thought through three, through the areas in phase through, one through three. In phase five, this is where we can continue to run the homeroom model and the home-based model, but all of our kids can come to school. If they choose. So this is, the restrictions are much easier to, to implement. It will be, as far as we understand from the state, it'll be based on the data and once we get to this, we'll be able to operate pretty normally. So as a school district, we believe that the health and safety of our students, families and staff are foundational to effective learning. Our phased approach helps us educate our students while protecting their health and safety and the health and safety of our staff. We'd like nothing more than to start the school year with all thirty-seven hundred students, but we know that it's just not safe to do it. With, it's not safe for all of our students, staff and families. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to do another exchange and I need your feedback. So what we're, let me get this up here. So the question I want to know is, and I know it's a lot of information. I want, want to get your initial thoughts before we move on to the question and the answer portion. And you can continue to answer this question throughout the day and overnight. As the thoughts continue to come to mind, please take the time to rate each other's thoughts so we can process the data to help you guide the next, help guide our next phase of planning. So you take your phone or iPad and you scroll it over the QR code or you go to that website, tejoin.com and you type in that number. Just wanted to know, what are some of the things to consider as we develop the final return to school plan that you didn't see reflected in this presentation? So I'm going to start the clock and start the process here. If you don't mind logging in. Trying to show that it's kind of, there we go. I hit, it went from zero to two hundred seventy-four. I knew people were answering already. At about two minutes, I'll flip screen so we can see what some of the thoughts are. But again, what are some of the things to consider? As we develop the final return to school plan that you didn't see reflected in the presentation? So we have about five hundred participants so far, so thank you for logging in and sharing your thoughts. About thirty seconds, I'll flip over so you can start to see the thoughts. So if you haven't had a chance to go to that website or to scroll over the QR code, please do that pretty soon here. I want to see the thoughts coming up here.
Chris, a lot of people are asking questions here. I don't know if that's what you intended.
That's okay. That's okay. It'll get processed and we'll be able to work with it. Could plan if someone tests positive, how will materials for virtual be handled according to all lessons? Students can review what was, or what it was missed. These are great questions. I'm curious to see what. As they all take shape. Yeah, if you don't mind, continue to put in, what are your thoughts or what did we miss? And rate each other's thoughts so that we can see what comes up. What we'll do is in the morning, we'll start processing this data. And theming it and flushing out what we missed so we can revise the plan. We ran a session with our staff on Friday and we're still processing that data. And we know that this was a draft and we need to revise, so. This was a great opportunity to get feedback, so we know what to, what to revise. This is great feedback. The question, can Dexter teachers teach the home-based model? They are. Our teachers will be teaching everything other than the handful of courses when kids take. Washington Community courses or if they take Japanese or something that is, we get students at the high school that'll take a one-off class, one or two of them. And they usually do those through Michigan Virtual. So the first question's a good one. Seems to stay at the top, the plan if someone tests positive. When we worked with the health department, their answer is it depends. And our experience so far is it really is, it depends. Depends on who they were exposed to, the, the length of the exposure, was it within six feet for fifteen minutes or more? We have to kind of navigate FERPA and HIPAA laws, notifications. Right now, we're leaning Right now, we're leaning towards we would notify everyone if there was a case where we had to quarantine. So we're still working through the final details on that. And we're meeting as the, as a county with the health department, I think this week, we're trying to work through that. Is there flexibility between options? There is some. Yeah, at the high school, the challenge would be with credits. So the high school ideally, we would wait till the semester to get a logical switch back to face to face. Or to the, from the home bound option to the homeroom option. Just so students don't risk missing credits and things like that. Recording all lessons do that students can review and what was said or if that was missed. We want to try to get a balance of our zooming and screen time with kids the best we can, so. We'll work with our staff. That's, that's a good, how working parents will teach their kids during virtual learning. That isn't teacher-led. That is a, that is one of our challenges. And we completely understand our staff is also have children, including myself, we're all wrestling with this. There is, we, we really want to find a way to make this work. I had to keep the safety of our kids. Recording all this, did that, temperatures taken or virtual screenings for teachers and students, we're still working through that. We met with Toyota last week to talk. Through their processes that they've used down, just down the road from here. And we're trying to work through what. Procedures we can put in place. What data sources are you relying upon to decide to move in between phases? There is a link. In the presentation right on that phase plan, if you click on the hyperlink, it'll show you. That's where, that's one of the data sources we've been looking and if you continue to drill down and see where they pull the data from. Some paper packets will be provided depending on the course and the content. We do have books that'll have to be given out, et cetera. So. If you don't mind continuing to put thoughts in here, that would be greatly appreciated. It, it'll help guide our thinking and our planning. So I want to thank everyone for taking the time out of their summer to listen and be involved today. I know that there are a lot of questions in regards to the school year that are still unanswered. I'm fully confident that our dedicated staff will be to, be able to adapt. With the changing scenarios throughout the school year, I know that our staff will provide the best education possible in this unique time while prioritizing the safety of our students and our staff. I understand that in these scenarios, there's not a perfect option. I imagine that all of you had a hard time seeing a perfect fit when it comes to your child's education tonight. We worked really hard to provide options and solutions to an ever-changing target. We look forward to reading through the feed, feedback and thought exchanges as we continue to hone our plans. I can't thank you enough for participating tonight and entrusting us with your child's education. Just want to thank you. The next steps tonight are to open up for a question and answer session. If you have any questions, please type them in the Q and A section. I'll work to answer these questions in the next thirty minutes or so. After that, the board meeting will resume into a public comment. Followed by board discussion. No decisions will be made tonight. This meeting is an opportunity for the full board and the entire community to hear the draft plan, ask questions, provide feedback. And all of that input will help shape the proposed plan that'll be submitted to the state. Our plan is to work this week to, to revise. So I'm going to go to the Q and A, holy cow, eighty-nine, a hundred and nineteen questions. So let me, uh. Let me start picking them. Um. Okay, we'll start with. What was that?
If you start at the top, I asked people to dismiss their questions if they got answered while you were talking, so I, I feel like it should be clean.
Okay, well, I just, it keeps moving on me. So. One of the questions about internet access, if families do not have adequate internet access. We have been working, as we did in the spring, we provided some hotspots, we've set up. All of our buildings to be able to have, the majority of our buildings that there's access outside the buildings, we're still working. We got pretty close for families on internet access this spring. We want to continue to do that. Okay, let me, uh. I'm trying to read this pretty lengthy first question. The latency of this virus has been confirmed at up to fourteen days. Making statements at schools. That start one to two weeks prior to us would give us a good indication of infection rates could not be accurate. It will take a minimum of the virus latency period, two weeks plus the time it takes to get a test, some number of days minimum. The time it takes the test results to come back, that was three weeks. Keep us, keep that in mind. We, yes, thank you. We, that's, so we know that we have some schools starting around the country. There was a school in Indiana that started last week and made it one day. We know that schools are opening up around the country. We are about twenty-eight days out from the first group of those schools opening. We'll have some in Michigan that will be starting in the next couple of weeks. So we know that week of September eighth, we, we'll be starting remotely for all but our highest need students. And so that should give us enough time to watch the data. That's our hope. If we choose home-based and then later in the year, the virus is so well under control that schools can open back normally, will my children? Who have been learning at home be allowed to switch and come into the building? Yes. The answer is yes. At the high school, we'd want to aim at semester. Ideally, at the other grade levels, we can make it a little smoother transition, transition depending on the timing and the students and how many. What we have to do with class list at that time. Is home-based led by in-district teachers? Yes. And would those teachers also lead a homeroom class? Not necessarily. At the high school, we can see teachers doing a mix because of the way a high school schedule works. Elementary, they'll be isolated to do either home-based or homeroom. Best case scenario, when do high school students make it? At least to the hybrid stage? It all depends on the data. If the data gets better now, then it's soon. If it, and if we find that as we start transitioning the elementary, we can work out the logistics better. And the data starts to show that it's safer, we'll be moving students in sooner. We have wrestled with what the metrics are and whether we want metrics to go from stage to stage or not, that is something we're still wrestling with. Last year, the high school teachers use a variety of platforms from Remind to Google Classroom to Canvas and more. Will the teacher platforms be streamlined? So we do not have such a variety? Yes. The high school teachers will all be using Canvas. What is the actual amount of time for live remote instruction on a daily basis? It'll probably be, I don't have the slide sitting here handy. It was, I want to say there's twenty minutes. Probably a little break, another twenty minutes, another twenty minutes. So no more than probably an hour zooming a day for a kid, but not all in a row. What will be the protocol if we start phased return and then cases increase? Is it percentage based? It's a great question. We'll be working with the health department. There's, again, we're in uncharted territory opening up and we're still watching, we're watching everyone. We're watching athletics. It's supposed to start next week around the state. And we know of teams that have been quarantined in districts nearby here. We know of, we watched the, saw the Pac-12 athletes and just said that they're not playing unless there's some agreement. We're hearing other universities are shutting sports down. I think that's going to have a play on what happens in schools. We know schools, we had, there was just a case in Georgia from the summer camp. So there's information coming in pretty quickly. And I think that's going to change however, whatever we plan as the process down for intermittent shutdowns and what the criteria are will evolve. And that's where we have to rely on the health department for their guidance. So will instruction from home be live instruction? Some, some will be live, some will be synchronous, live on Zoom. And some will be asynchronous, which will be students working independent. If you choose the home-based model, can you change to the homeroom model later in the year? Yes, it depends on timing and grade level, but the answer is yes. Can you clarify the criteria for moving through the phases of bringing students into the building? Will each step require fourteen days of decreasing tests or just between step one and two? As of right now, it was just between step one and two and then step four and five till we get to full blown, our full enrollment. We are still looking at the metrics to make sure we have the right metrics and should it be a multitude of metrics or not? That is something we're wrestling with. I'd like a better understanding of special education services available in the fall, especially for the hundred percent remote services. What can we expect from staff? This will be dependent on the grade level and the IEPs. We will be holding a meeting with our special education students, maybe by, it might be somewhat individual and it might be group. We have some students that are, there's a variation of needs of students. So we have some students that there really is no way to offer virtual or remote instruction with. Those are the students we'll bring in first. And then with remote, we'll be doing a full load of teaching with accommodations. It'll be very different from what we did in the spring. It'll be a full day and not necessarily the full. Day of staring at a screen, but a full day worth of instruction and we'll utilize our paraprofessionals to assist with that. If classrooms are quarantined due to a student-teacher exposure, would they revert to the virtual learning option during quarantine time? Yes, and there would be a transition plan for that. We're still working out the exact details because there's so many different scenarios. As long as the teacher's healthy, we, it would be a smoother transition. If the teacher is on, is. Test positive or is it having symptoms, we're going to have to, we're working on what the plans are from there. When we think virtual, will be live teachers teaching virtually or will the sessions be recorded? It'll be a combination. On Thursday, we'll go into what the virtual looks like with demos. It'll be a combination of synchronous instruction, which is what you're talking about with live teachers. I can see it at the later grades or even at fifth grade up would be a lot of class discussions and some other explanations. But there would be some independent learning time too, that'll be asynchronous, which is done at the student's pace. If we were in Summit for fifth grade and we will be able to continue in Summit for six instead of learning a new platform? Yes, students that were, chose Summit, we'll stay in, will be offered Summit. Students that chose Pinnacle will be given an option that set up with Pinnacle teachers. High school, if all goes to plan with the phase in, what is the date or month that high school students? Be in the classroom? It depends on how fast we can transition, how fast the data happens. It probably, looking at it, it'll be October at the best, but I look at if we counted fourteen days from now and. It, that's what, we haven't added it all up exactly. We're still working on the metrics. It all is going to depend on what we do behavior-wise as a community and as an area and how well we can control the, the numbers. What is, just answering that. How will off-campus consortium classes be handled for the high school? We are working to try, it depends on the course. We're working with all the consortium districts to work out the logistics. For example, some of the courses like cosmetology are already, they fall under a couple sets of rules because they're, they're working on here in nails. And in that setting, so they fall under the licensing rules there. And then if you look at. Construction trades, they're, they're outside at the start of the year for the most part, which is adds an ability to do some things that we couldn't do later in the year. If we can go to fifty percent in school, would it make sense to have one group be Monday, Tuesday and the other group Tuesday, Friday? To keep the germ bubbles sep- as separated as possible. This is something we have wrestled back and forth with. As of last Thursday, we went with the Monday, Thursday and the Tuesday, Friday, we're not. A hundred percent sure that's exactly how we want to do it. We've gone back and forth on which way to, way to do that. The way the homeroom is described was a nine to two PM. Does that mean the home-based kids will not be taught during the nine to two before and after? Depends on the teacher's schedule. So if we have teachers that are teaching accommodations, so if it's high school, for example. They'll have, they may have some windows of time where they'll be able to work with their virtual students. What tools will teachers have to teach virtually? How will they teach separate lesson plans in one day, virtual and in person? That transition time is going to be our trickiest moment. That's why we went with nine to two, so we can set up common plan, common work. For the virtual, we're going to probably work as grade levels in the elementary. To ma- and at the high school and middle school departmentally, so they can share some of the lesson designs. We also have some lessons that we've had some content that we've worked through and created or partnered. We're really close to finishing a partnership that'll help provide some significant. Content that we can utilize and build from. So we're working through the details and that's the transition. That was two weeks ago, it'd be the toughest ones. What are the criteria for moving backwards? This is, this has been one that we've wrestled with a lot. We'll have to use the health department. One of the concepts we see that if we have to move backwards, it's probably going to be a really a big swing back. So that's what we're wrestling with. And what are the exact metrics? With the homeroom model, will some students be starting in the classroom on September eighth? Only some high, some of our most, our most vulnerable kids. And we're still working out the details on that. We just met with staff a little bit on Friday, we're meeting with them again next week. We have to talk to some parents and try to see what criteria we can get in place and procedures. And so it's a very small number, the parents that their students could potentially be starting at that point. Have been or will be contacted by our special education staff very soon. What is the criteria to move from phase, step two to phase step three? It's mostly time. So we may be able to speed it up depending if the moving from. The middle school at fifty percent when they get, or twenty-five to fifty, we might be able to do middle and high school at the same time. If the elementary goes pretty well, that's why we need to phase it so we can see what works and what doesn't. For online learning, hybrid or home-based with a variety of mediums include hard copy packets in addition to online content, it depends on grade level. In the earliest grades, there are books that they need to, that we utilize for reading. In the later grades, there's textbooks, it depends on the grade level. How will we support teachers who have school-aged children? That is a great question. We're still wrestling with that. And it's the same challenge we have for teachers, administrators and all of our parents. Our parents in the district, we're all wrestling with how we're going to support our kids and how we're going to support each other to get through this. Have Dexter teachers specifically high school, since they will have the longest plan full online, be trained specifically for remote ed? Is there also support plan for students who do not learn well online? We have been working with our high, all of our staff, our teaching staff since spring to get them up to speed and. Help with their capacity to teach online. And support plans for students who do not learn well online. We are working through all the different models we can put in place, given the scenarios we have to work within. No different than we know that we have students that don't learn as well at a classroom. So we're using that same model to try to help support students. If students are doing virtual throughout the year, what are the times that they are recorded to be in contact with the teachers of school? Will there be flexibility in their daily schedules? Yes, there's some flexibility. Wednesdays will be definite. If students are in the homeroom or home-based model, there'd be, there are some more asynchronous options than there would be in the home-based model. The parameters for deciding which students have the highest instructional needs, we have students that are in our resource room classes, et cetera, that we would be starting with first. The next question. I'll address in generalities. So students that occasionally have trouble because of specific disabilities. That may struggle wearing a mask, we are going to have to work on transition. That's one of our challenges as far as the transition and that we have to. That's why we want to work with certain students first. Is Summit offered in fourth grade? We aren't ready to move to the fourth grade for that. We have it from fifth through eighth. And we're experienced and have been doing it about four or five years now, so we want to stay with where we are. Will fire drills be suspended during the forthcoming school year? That's a great question. That is by law, we have to do them, but in the executive orders, it's been addressed. And there's some legal changes that have been happening to be able to buy it, get us flexibility during these windows. What plan is in place for if and when teachers strike on the first day of in-class teaching? We work really close with our teachers' union. They are on the planning committee. We work really close. We have a great collaborative relationship with all of our groups. We are all in this, working together and we don't anticipate issues like a strike. We, we work together. Will parents be committed to the homeroom option or parents be permitted to change to home-based depending on comfort level? If you choose the homeroom option or the home-based option, we would want, like, homeroom to home-based is probably more flexible. Home-based to homeroom, we'd have to time it out depending on the grade level. Like I said, elementary will be easier. It'll depend on class list and numbers and timing. High school is always dependent on credits and making sure that the classes, kids don't lose credit. If there's a hybrid option where you could attend consortium classes in person but do the rest of the classes online, for some courses, that may happen. I could see a few of the career tech classes being done in a, being able to operate earlier than others. For example, building trades is outside. How will you select the twenty-five percent that goes into homeroom class? So any parent that chooses the homeroom model can go into the homeroom model as far as when we get to the twenty-five percent. As far as when we get to the twenty-five percent per day, we are taking the method right now and we're thinking this is gonna work as we've gone through the high school classes, taking every student that has someone else in their household in the district, put them in one group to gr- create a group A or B. We're now breaking down those classes to see what it balances out as, and then we'll start working our way through the district so we can get families together. And then for the twenty-five percent, we're gonna have to split it half somehow. We haven't broken down those numbers yet because we have to do it by hand. Are you hiring increased janitorial staff? We are always hiring custodial staff. At any moment, we have openings in custodial staff and we are working to find as many people as we can. And if you know of anybody, send them our way. When will we know if our student is in group A or group B? As soon as we, probably before school starts, we would know that. We're, the plan is August tenth. Final plan comes to the full board. The parents sign up for home-based or homeroom model is sent out. We take that data by, do by the end of the week and then we start breaking down the data, which will take us two or three weeks in staffing changes and schedule changes. Usually we take months to build schedules. We're gonna have to do this in weeks. And we, but we wanted to give parents the most information possible in time based on the situation, making a informed choice. So we will be able to notify closer to the start of school. Will siblings be able to go the same day for homeroom option? That's what we're trying to make happen so that it's easiest on families. Explain the criteria to keep moving step by step. Is this based on local COVID cases increasing? Was the threshold to go to the next step? We haven't figured out, we haven't identified a strict mate or a strict criteria to move to the next step. It's really at that point, it's on time. If you click on the links in the step plan with the little circle, there's the first at fourteen day of decreasing cases. If you click on that link, you'll see the exact site we've been looking at and the data, when you drill down there, you can see the data. Given classes will be starting remotely, will be possible for students and families to meet their homeroom teachers in advance for the semester? Yes, we want to try to, that's part of the open house concept that we want to try to facilitate in the onboarding. We're not sure we can pull it off face by, face to face. We have honestly been looking at tents to see what we can do with a tent or a series of tents, but we don't have enough tents for thirty-seven hundred kids. To make sure I understand this correctly, with the two to fourteen day observations period implemented during the first four stages, the earliest a high school student will enter the building will be late September, early October, correct? Any, if you start adding it up, that's probably about as fast as we see it happening. During March and April, we had a couple of Zoom classes that overlapped that overlap during AP exams. We hope that this would not happen in the school year. Since they'd be graded classes, unlike in Richmond, it was done in April or, we, that's one of the reasons that the in the presentation today, we don't have exact times because we have to work them out within the building to make sure times aren't overlapping. AP classes can be taught online and it'd be the same in, same curriculum as homeroom and home-based. Is the virtual home-based model the same as what the homeroom model kids are getting on the days that they are not in person? The home-based model will be set up for a full year of curriculum where the home room model will be set up by that exact teachers that would see them and be planning for seeing them face to face. So they may reorder the curriculum a little bit because some of it in our plan is they will see the kids face to face at some point. The home-based model will be taught by Dexter teachers. ECSE, we are still working on the plan for ECSE. We'll be reaching out to those families. We are working out, ECSE is the preschool, special education services. So we are working out, there's a, it's a pretty small number of families. We'll work directly with the families as we finish our plans. Why would the two weekly blocks not be Monday and Tuesday for cohort? Well, we talked about that. We've been going back and forth on how to do this. And that's how we originally started was that we'd have group A on Monday, Tuesday, group B on Thursday, Friday with cleaning on Wednesday. And then we started to think that we might be missing kids. We wouldn't get the interaction we needed or that the lessons might not be as smooth if we did it that way. Will teachers have classes on some home-based, with some home-based kids and some homeroom kids? Probably only at the high school, we would anticipate. Do you anticipate maintaining the full music education offering for students? Yes, we've been working really closely with our music teachers to try to make modifications and to figure out how to work within the recommended criteria. We've ordered, for all of our instruments, we've ordered the what they call their covers that are recommended in the band study. There was a study commissioned by the music association. And what they looked at is the use of masks, different covers, et cetera. Those are on order. We have, we're working to try to work out all the details. Music is a huge part of our curriculum. It's really, the band is called the Pride of Dexter. The orchestra, we've worked through how many students we can fit in the orchestra classroom. We've looked at the CPA, how we can utilize that space and other spaces. Choir, we've done the same. We've been in constant communication with our music instructors to work out the logistics. Will we have a simple reminder lookup system to check when our kids are meant to be where? Yes, we will be communicating with families exactly what to do and when. Even though it is best at semester break, this is not until end of January. If all goes well, can this be revised for high schoolers to go back sooner? Okay, so with high school moving from the home bound or home-based to homeroom model, if a student is taking an online and plan to take online Algebra II and what could happen with that is they may not necessarily be in the exact same place at the time of year if they transition before semester. So some of those courses, if they're pretty common courses we teach, we might be able to work. Some, it might have to be that the students have to work on a few of the courses, if it's singleton classes that we can't make work in and a simple transition. It's all gonna be kid-specific, but the biggest challenge with high school is we don't want the kids to lose credit. Will teachers be let go if we elect to enroll our children in the home-based platform? No. Our staff, we are planning on we are planning on our staff teaching this and we have been working really closely with our association and with our teachers. Teachers filled out a survey to see who wants to work on, who would be willing to teach online, who's wanting to come to buildings. We're gonna work within the staff we have and make sure they're all, we're all in this together. Are temperatures going to be taken at the door? Are screening questions going to be asked? Minimize exposure? How are we guaranteeing that parents are not sending children to school when they are ill? This will require additional help from the parents. We have been going trying to work out logistics of taking temperatures at the door and what the protocols would be. It is logistically a challenge and whether that is actually, it would tell us if they have active symptoms. It doesn't tell us if they are just carriers. That's one of our challenges. I'm wondering what options are available for families with two parents who work full-time, parents who are essential workers and/or single parents who need to work. We're, we're ha- we're wrestling with this. Our challenge is how do we bring students into the building safely and how do we have staff safe to educate our kids? And this is one of our challenges and we're still working on it. We don't, some schools have set up separate pro- programs. We were able to offer at Jenkins, we moved and started a, our preschool for essential workers. We have about twenty-five total kids that we've been providing support for since May, late May. Camp Dexter was about thirty or forty students, so the numbers are pretty low. And that's helped us manage it, but try to do that at scale then creates our problem of how we do that within the guidelines. Did I hear correctly? Wednesday will not be a school day, but we use professional development and cleaning. It will be a day of instruction. There'll probably be more, we need to be able to schedule IEPs. We need to be able to schedule individual group and coaching sessions and tutoring sessions, et cetera. And it allows us for the cleaning also. So students will still have work to do those days and then they'll have a mandatory login at some point. Does the homeroom mo- how does a homeroom model work at DHS specifically because kids' schedules don't match for all six hours? For example, not every kid in AP Calc is in the same classes or choices for the other classes such as science, English and history? Yes, that's why we moved to that. Three classes per day and to try to limit the number of times they change between each other so they're not going to all six. And that's when we get back to the building. If we're at a hundred percent, we'll have to still try to keep them in limited numbers per day. I am confused regardless of home-based or homeroom. There will be no person-to-person classes starting September eighth. Is that correct? Based on the data right now, that is correct. If we get fourteen days of decrease in cases, we would have an opportunity. What is the plan for offering ACT, SAT, PSAT and other high-stakes testing for juniors and seniors? Our seniors have not been able to take the SAT yet at school. It was canceled this spring. SAT and the Department of Ed has set up dates in late September through early October. We are still working through logistics on how to help our students be able to get access to that if that's what's gonna be scheduled. We know that it has serious implications for college admissions and we are trying to work out logistics. We have a meeting this week based on what the Department of Ed sent us last Thursday on the testing dates. For elementary and intermediate, if you have A and B group student, students where A attends Monday and Thursday and B attends Tuesday and Friday with deep cleaning on Wednesdays, is there not deep cleaning between Monday and Tuesday? If my child is in group B, I would want to ensure that the spaces are thoroughly cleaned between groups and students. Most schools elsewhere have students attending only two days a week. A grouping of students is a Monday and Tuesday or a Tuesday and Friday group. So Wednesday is the big cleaning day between groups. Why isn't Dexter laying it out this way? That is, we wrestled back and forth. We wrestled between what, how well we can clean, knowing we can wipe down surfaces every time the class leaves and how deep we can clean with our sprayers, et cetera, with what we can get done in overnight and what we would need entire days for. And what is best instructional? So we've been trying to balance the two. And we have, just last week, we moved to the spread between the days, the Monday, Thursday or the Tuesday, Friday. But this is feedback we've gotten several times today that we'll end up wrestling with and trying to figure out what the right thing to do. If my student starts out in the homeroom plan and I feel that they are not safe, can they be transitioned to the home-based plan at any time? Yes, we can make that work. For a virtual day, what would be this, the school hours be for Beacon and Wiley? They'd probably be for the most part during the school day. There would be some asynchronous ability to be able to do things and if it's a family schedule a little better. Julie, how much? We have another two hundred twenty-one to go. Oh, you're muted.
Would you like me to see if I can copy these and save them?
Yeah, I think we can somehow.
I've been clicking around. I haven't seen the option.
I think they save in the, after the meeting, I think I can pull them. I don't know why Julie's unable to unmute.
If we're not able to finish them now, would it be possible to open it up tomorrow or Wednesday and continue so everyone can hear the answers?
A lot of them are the same questions. Duck, keep going while Julie is trying to unmute.
I was just able to unmute. For some reason, my mouse didn't want to work. So it is seven thirty-eight. I am thinking we should conclude that Q and A. But would it be possible? Because it did sound like there were a number of repetitive questions. If there are some unique questions, would you be able to either type something up to send out or record answers to the remaining questions?
We, we will try. We're, we're planning as fast as we can. We'll get as many ans- we've been working on a Q and A and we'll try to add it on.
Okay, that would be great.
The data from the thought exchange too to help us sort.
Good. But someone, you will be looking at every question and then if there are key questions, you can answer those and add them to the Q and A. And where are those Q and A responses found?
We haven't released it yet. It's not quite ready.
Okay, but will it then be sent out to all parents?
At some point, yes.
Okay, great. So at this point, I would suggest that we take a, a five-minute recess and then we would come back for public participation. So if any community members wanted to make a comment or statement, we would then spend time doing that and then we would move to the board discussion.
Can I interrupt really quickly?
Absolutely.
We have a page on the website that's dedicated to the fall updates. So any results we have from these forums, any you know, frequently asked questions, those are all posted on that one page. So if people are worried they haven't gotten an email, if they go to the district website and pull down the district tab to fall updates, everything pertaining to fall is posted there, just as a backup.
Great. Thank you. So if someone on the board would like to make a motion to take a five-minute recess, that would be great.
Hi Darrell, Kipki, move that we take a five-minute recess.
Is there support?
Julie's Bruderly second.
There's a motion and a support to take a five-minute recess. Hope, could you take a roll vote, please?
Mrs. Bruderly?
Aye.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Doesn't look like she's on the call.
Dr. Kipki?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed? Dr. Schumaker?
Yes.
I, I didn't hear Barbara. Sorry.
That's right. I wanted to say aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So unanimous support for a five-minute recess. It's seven forty-one, so we'll resume at seven forty-six. See you then. Great. It looks like we have all of our board members, with the exception of Mara Greater X, now connected. So we will, I will call the meeting back to order. And at this point, we will open it up for public participation or comment. If any member of the public wishes to address the board, please virtually raise your hand by clicking the appropriate button on your screen at this time. If you're unable to do so, you could also send a message through the chat box. And we will try to take account of how many individuals would like to speak. My mouse, for some reason, is not operating properly. So I cannot actually see who might have raised their hands.
I think we need to give people a second. There's a few coming in now.
Can you see if anyone has raised their hand?
Yeah, I can see four at the moment, but they're coming and going. So I think people are figuring out how it works.
So I'll just share several general rules before we begin that public participation. So members who wish to speak as they're called upon will be unmuted to speak for their allotted time. Board members and Dr. Timis will not respond to comments made during the public comment period. So any questions asked would then be responded to at a later time. And speakers should, of course, take into consideration rules of common courtesy and be respectful and avoid any derogatory statements or personal attacks. And then if you would state your name, place of residence, and then indicate whether you'd like any follow-up after the meeting. How many speakers?
There are currently five.
Okay. So we'll allow each individual who would like to speak, then the five minutes to speak. And if someone else could call on them and unmute them because I'm unable to do so.
I will do that. That way I can give a timer too. So we're at one, two, three, four, five, six at the moment. There may be more that add, so.
Actually, and if individuals, because I imagine we could get a few more people who want to speak. If you can keep your comments closer to three minutes, that would be great because we could hear from more people.
Yeah, so we're at eight right now. I'm going to start with David Kobler.
Hey, thank you very much. In terms of public comments, first, thank you to the board and Dr. Timis. I know you guys have been doing tireless work on this project. And I know it's largely, it's a very difficult task. I would urge the board to very carefully review the CDC's guidelines. And as there's been much talk this evening about the safety of students, that it would weigh very heavily upon the board that the CDC has determined that opening in person is not only safe, but is in the best interest of the student. So thank you for your consideration and thank you for your work. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Carmen Crawford.
Hi, thank you. I think I'm supposed to say my residence. I'm an 8743 girl in Pygmy, which is still in the Dexter School District. I was wondering if when the board discusses everything tonight, if they could elaborate a little bit more on the upgrades to the HVAC system. I think Celine Schools upgraded their HVAC system already. And I'm wondering why it seems as though we're kind of glossing over doing that. I know it's a million-dollar upgrade, but it does seem like it would be beneficial to the students and then also beneficial in years to come with the flu viruses that go around and the noroviruses that go around the school and all those types of viruses that are floating around all the time in our school district. That it seems like updating the HVAC may not be a bad thing to really be taking some, you know, hard looks at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Kowalski, Prop, yeah, Kowalski, I guess.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. So yes, I'm Christine Kowalski. I'm at 3609 Meadowview Drive in Dexter.
Oops. We lost you. Let's see. Are you still there?
If you do a search on the participants, on the panelists, you can pull her up.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, sorry. I'm not sure what happened. But yes, I'm at 3609 Meadowview Drive in Dexter. I have a son that will be a senior in high school and a daughter that will be starting as a freshman. And I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Timis and all the staff that have worked on the plan because it's clearly very comprehensive. I just wanted to make a few comments. One, that when you did the poll at the beginning, clearly the kind of important issues that rose to the top were safety. I don't know if that's surprising or what you thought you might find or that people were really just more focused on kind of like get kids into school. But I'm sure you'll take that into account. I just wanted to make a comment that if there's a way that we could see kind of the results of those polls, that would be wonderful if you could send that out. So we can see kind of further down what other people were focusing on as important. And I also just wanted to make a general comment that I think it's going to take a lot of transparency and honesty on the part of all of the families in the district. If we do move to in-person teaching, which I know we all want to do because it worked. You know, there's a reason that's the way we do it because it works well. I am, like many others, just concerned about the safety. And we had experience where my daughter was exposed to two people. She really only went one place in three months, and she was exposed to COVID and to two people who wound up being in the hospital. One is still on a ventilator. So it is in the community. It's scary when you've been exposed. And our testing, we were contacted by the Health Department and a tracer. And she told me that oftentimes when they contact people, people don't respond. So I just want to say that, you know, I think we're all going to have to try and work together on this. To be honest, it's really difficult. Our testing took so long that we ended up, as a family, being quarantined for close to four weeks. And we had no symptoms, but we were considered potentially symptomless per year. So we stuck with that. And I think that it's going to be hard, but we're all going to have to work together to do that. My only other comment is I would really like to see one slide that kind of shows. Right now, we're thinking of going with the home base model. And if there could be some slide put together that really clearly shows. I had put the comment about the nine to two, and I think the response was that, oh, the teachers may have time during nine to two. I still don't really understand if there's a way to just scream what's happening with the teachers when people are there in person versus someone who's at home. If there's some kind of slide that could just more clearly lay out like exactly what will happen and what times during the day. I mean, my kids are going to be in high school, but I think it would probably be useful for other people as well. And I don't want to run over my time, so that will conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Gregory Brand.
Did we lose him?
Nope, he's here. I think he's just figuring it out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so Greg Brand, Syatt Township resident. First, I just want to say I had to do the back-to-work COVID planning just for our job site with 100 people on it. And I know, I want to very much send appreciation to Dr. Timis and everybody that worked on this plan because it's very difficult, and I think you guys did a wonderful job. So thank you for thinking of our kids and how you can best do this safely. The other part, just for the Thursday meeting, I'm hoping there can be a little more information on band and music classes with the two options with home base or remote learning for band. So that's my only comment, just hoping to hear a little more on Thursday.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Jessica Feely. Jessica, I think you need to unmute yourself at this point.
So thank you guys all for your planning. I know this has probably been really hard and it's impossible to please everybody. So it seems like you guys have been really thoughtful in trying to come up with a good plan for all of our children. My question is in regards to the moving from phase to phase. It seems like it depends on there being 14 days of declining cases. And I was just curious what data you guys are using to determine if the cases are declining. Is it the state of Michigan? Is it Washtenaw County or is it Dexter School District?
Thank you.
We've got Pete Bigelow.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Like others, I'd like to express my appreciation for the thoughts and planning that's gone into unprecedented, you know, plan and situation here. My comment would be, after reviewing the plan and listening tonight, that I'm just a little concerned that it seems like there's, as far as the online options go, there's a minimal amount of instruction given with a live teacher in real time. And I also, you know, further concerned with the, it sounds like that there's no live online teaching on Wednesdays, if I heard that right. And I'll concede that I want to kind of go back and review this. So my comment would just be that I recommend that the board, as it considers this plan, vet the amount of time that students are really spending with an actual teacher in that remote environment in the real time. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for your comments.
We've got a couple more. Meg Shaner, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hi, this is Meg Shaner. I live on Gross Road in Dexter within the district. And thank you so much for all the effort that you have put into these plans. I really think you've done a good job of really balancing and doing a good job thinking of the variety of people who are stakeholders in this. I do want to make sure that we call out just how much teachers need to be considered in this model and really appreciated. And so I think as there was notes before about transparency, talking about what we're doing. There's research that says that teachers are leaving the industry in droves because they're afraid of what's going to happen in this situation. And so just making sure that we value them and we really put their safety first as well.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Sarah Holly. She can unmute herself now. There we go.
Unmuted.
So, and this is Kevin Holly. I'm with Sarah. Kind of reinforcing one of the comments that was brought up earlier about the kind of the structure of the home web-based learning and making sure that there's teacher interaction, there's coursework that's being graded. There's structure, just basically structure. We were lacking a lot of structure, I think, in the spring. And it was hard to keep, we're not teachers. So it was hard to keep our kids motivated and doing their coursework. So just a comment that it'd be great if we had a better understanding of what to expect from the home learning process in the fall.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Becca, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Hi, this is Becca Talis. I live in Lockalpine. Kind of in line with what Meg had just spoke about and also the last callers. Just for some thought, you know, we really struggled as parents on how to engage our students and how to help them at home. So any resources and any time that can be thought in telling us how we can better support our teachers would be really appreciated. And then I also have some questions about, you know, cleaning supplies. And there's typically a need for us to support our schools with, you know, Clorox wipes and hand sanitizer and Kleenex on a normal basis. But now the needs are going to be even greater. So I'm interested in information on, will that, is there funding to provide that information for the district? Or is that an area that you're going to need families to help? Those are my questions.
Thank you. We'll add that to the list of questions to respond to. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we have James McCarter.
Thank you very much. My name's Jim McCarter. I live 3580 Hudson, just right up the street from Copeland. And I appreciate this opportunity. I think that there are a couple striking comments that I've heard already and seen in other places as well. And that is how parents have been struggling with how to engage students and do teaching from home. And if, as a parent of two Dexter students, K through 12, and as a retired teacher, if there's a silver lining in this, I think that maybe the, bring the parents and the staff in the district if there's a silver lining in this, I think that maybe the bring the parents and the staff in the district, other districts as well together, because if you can imagine what it's like trying to motivate and teach one, two, or three kids at home, challenges when you go to classrooms of thirty in-person, let alone on in mixed situations, hybrid situations. It it, I am now retired, but it makes me so grateful to my colleagues who are still teaching. This leads me to my two requests. One is uh effective teaching is just such a huge job in the best of circumstances. And this is clearly um an outrageously difficult one. You've mentioned both in the verbal comments and in the slides about coordination with staff and with the union. I just ask you, please to get out of the box as much as possible in how you um work with teachers to to come up with effective instruction that is safe in this situation. Think about whether or not you can increase perhaps dramatically the sizes of online classes, virtual classes in order to take account of those who are in more vulnerable situations, at-risk students, single-parent households, some of the other things that have been mentioned. People where it's going to be extremely difficult for them to be able to do virtual learning and we may have to create some small protected environments and do that on a basis of equity rather than equality. We're not necessarily going to be able to give every student exactly the same uh teaching and learning here. Uh, and equity to me, as opposed to equality, is something that is so important in this time. We cannot let our at-risk students slip further behind. I know we're a high-quality district and and we don't have some of the problems that other districts have in that regard, but we still have those problems. And all of the teachers know it. They see it in the classroom every day when the we're in normal times. Thank you for that. Thank you for the extremely hard work. I am really impressed. Uh, Dr. Timas, I you're just snap on and responding comments and going through things. I'm I'm grateful to you, to the board, the people who've been working on this all along.
Thank you very much.
Um, we've got Bradley Paul. Bradley, I think you need to unmute.
I I did. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Bradley Prawl. I live on Lexington Circle in Dexter. Um, so I was wondering about a couple things. One thing was the discussion on the Monday, Tuesday, or Monday, Wednesday. That's for the fifty percent. When we start at the twenty-five percent level, different groups of kids, of smaller groups, but those kids will all be alternating every day anyway. So if we can't properly, if we don't think we can properly clean the space between Monday and Tuesday for the fifty percent, then the twenty-five percent, we can't clean it properly for either. One of the other thoughts was that I found it sort of interesting that in the high school that there's, you're still thinking about having a passing time with perhaps three hundred to six hundred students moving through the hall, even if it's only half as often per day. That uh seems like it might be a challenge um to do within a safe way. Um, there might be the advantage there that that might not be starting till October or November at all based on the timeframes listed. The last point is on the stepping. Currently, it's, yeah, as people have noticed, sort of uncleared, how unclear how you're deciding to step between twenty-five percent and fifty percent and a hundred percent. There was a mention, there was something about the two weeks thing, which was um based on the the rate, the infection rates. But that seemed to just be like just to get started. And if you try to step in from twenty-five, fifty percent in like a one-week step with a with a disease that has a two-week incubation period, you don't even, you don't even know if the twenty-five percent is being successful and containing any issues until you've already stepped up to fifty percent if you step too fast. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Um, we have Kathleen and Craig McCool.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, so um first I just wanted to say thanks to the team for the effort that they put in to create this really thoughtful plan and to keep students and teachers safe. Thank you for that. Uh, the only thing I wanted to do was just echo kind of what Christine Kowalski was saying. And I'm sorry, I live in Dexter. Uh, I want to echo what Christine was saying. I agree that we all need to be working together. It's one thing if the school is enforcing the wearing of masks, but if it's not being enforced at home, then it's kind of a futile effort. No one wins. So just putting that out there.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Sharon Cardy.
Hi, thank you for all of the work you guys have done on this. Um, I think that I might say something that's slightly controversial for Dexter, but given that this is a respiratory issue that spreads pretty quickly, I'm really surprised to see that we are really dedicated to band and choir and orchestra. Um, I would really like to, you know, encourage the district to think about maybe putting those programs on pause for this year. Um, and if you can't put it on pause, making it so that kids who, parents opt not to have them in those programs this year um are not penalized for that or not kept from being varsity or kept from being promoted into chamber orchestra or whatever, um, as they move up the ladder. I've had some discussions with my kids about choir and then getting some pushback because they're they're telling me, well, if I don't do it now, then I won't be able to succeed later on in my career at school. And um, it seems really, it seems like it's putting us in a tough position. So when you're thinking about this, I would encourage you guys just to, you know, we're all making sacrifices for the coronavirus. This seems like a program, a bunch of programs that could take a year off. Um, if we can't take a year off, please do think about the folks who choose not to participate this year.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, now we're at um Meg Batulsky.
Uh, thank you for uh letting me speak. Um, I have a high school student in our house and one that's just going to college now. And first of all, I just want to say as a parent of two older children, I have a lot of sympathy for parents with younger children right now. I personally don't think I could have done that um to both work at home, if I was fortunate to have a job and um and deal with teaching kids from home. So I have a lot of sympathy there, but we're also in a difficult situation. So I'm looking at this from a high school student's point of view. And I just want to let you know that what it is important that Dexter makes a timely decision and allows time for this to sink in before the school year starts. I mean, of course, after this evening, all of the high school kids are going to be talking about this and thinking about it. And we need to, the board and the school, needs to think of a way to make sure that the kids know that this is just one part of their lives, right? This will be something they talk about in the future. Sometimes it's not the end of the world. It may be boring, but we have to, we have to take into account the mental health of our kids. And I don't think personally that's sending them all to school right now and letting them get sick. Which I know none of us want that to happen. But communications with the different age groups of kids is really important. And in terms of wearing a mask, you know, I'm just, I'm wondering if we can empower kids to also in our communications to to take a pledge to to wear a mask and save their friend or save their teacher or or be a responsible public citizen. There has to be a way to communicate these very important health protections with masks and with social distancing and with living in this world right now for the next six months to a year and have them be a part of it. Maybe the classes should talk about emergency planning or or find projects that where they can help another part of the country or the state or the world. There's so many problems that that need to be solved now. And I don't want to leave kids on, but there has to be a way to to empower our kids, both in the communications and implementation of this plan and in especially our older kids and in the projects that they work on this year. Because there's a lot of really important work they could be doing now that can get them to be excited as well instead of just thinking, oh, I'm going to be at home on my computer and board. So anyway, thank you again. I agree this was a comprehensive plan. And it it tells me once again that I'm so glad I live in the Dexter School District because you're thinking through things and allowing us to participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Um, we've got William Stevenson.
Hi, this is actually Jen Stevenson. I live on Ridge Line Circle in Dexter. Um, I have a uh a daughter who will be in first grade and a son who will be in fourth grade. And um, so that's kind of the context I'm coming from. And I first wanted to say thank you because as everyone else has noted, it's clear that there was a lot of time spent on this plan. I wanted to comment that I would just, I wanted to urge the board to sort of rethink the timeline. I know at least for my kids and probably a lot of other kids their age, consistency is really important. You know, of course, I'm concerned about safety and social emotional health, but consistency and routine is really important. And so in considering, you know, starting school on the eighth, but not really going in and then, you know, being there, but maybe only being there for a few weeks and having to go home if there's a problem with, you know, someone getting diagnosed in the classroom and then maybe being able to go back, but then getting out of school, like it just, I have friends in Ann Arbor that were frustrated that they they went to all online because that's a whole other thing to figure out with individual families and their jobs. But they were also relieved that, okay, we know what is happening. It's this and we're going to figure out how to do it. Instead of so much, so much flux and um so many things to juggle. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Like I said, I know that there was a lot of thought that was put into it, but um, I don't know. It would be nice to to know something for sure at some point and to be able to stick with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment.
Uh, we've got a single name here, Louis.
Hi, it's Mary Lewis. Hello, everybody, and uh nice job trying to deal with a completely difficult situation that nobody can really deal with because we don't know what's going to be thrown at us next. Uh, I have a junior in high school who has asthma. He's never attempted to wear a face mask all day yet. But uh, if he were to have breathing difficulty, can he just switch over to a face shield? And yes, this is a student that, of course, we could use the option to stay home, but he's desperate to go to school. And at this level in high school, he he really wants to uh study with the the teachers there and achieve. So the question is, can asthmatics wear face shields instead of masks? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment or your question, and I'm sure we'll um include that in our responses.
Next we have Carrie, sorry, Carrie Willard.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment, and and all of this is, you know, relative. But until we can answer the question about how how we will respond when someone tests positive in a classroom or in a school, this all seems like a lot of of time and resources being put into a plan that to me, the important answer is how we will respond. Because if we're, if we respond as we do today with a notification coming home, there's been strap or influenza A or B or what have you. Um, if the if the option is to shut down, it's just a ma, I mean, realistically, it's a matter of weeks before that happens. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you for your comment.
We've got Chelsea Conger.
Hi, um, I have young children and I'm wondering if I choose to teach them myself this year, will that in any way hurt the school district? Uh, I know that there's a count day and the school gets funding based on how many students are in the classroom. And I assume that'll work the same as enrolled in the virtual. Um, I don't, I want to support the schools. Obviously, I want to make sure we don't do anything that would hurt their funding or anything. But um having young children, I'm not sure if a virtual option is what's best for them. So I just want to, I want to know that if I do choose to not do a virtual option in homeschool, that it wouldn't negatively affect the school district.
Thank you for that. Dr. Timas, that would be a good one when coming to the Q and A.
Unless the student is enrolled, we receive no funding. So if it's a homeschool option, we can help provide curriculum and work through in the virtual or in the home-based option and try to support. That's the only way we can receive funding.
Julie, that's it for hands up.
Okay, great, thank you. So at this point, we are going to move on to the board discussion. And uh, as is our typical procedure, we will take turns among all board members, having an opportunity to share our thoughts. Well, if you'll keep that to seven minutes, and then we'll have an opportunity after everyone has spoken once for all board members to then have a follow-up thoughts or questions and then keep the second response to three minutes. Um, we have seven board members plus two student board members, so really nine individuals. And if we keep to that ten minutes apiece, that's an hour and a half, just so we gauge our time appropriately. So that would have us finishing at ten to ten. Um, and I I feel committed that we should try to wrap up by ten, but it would be up to the board's discretion should you all want to continue the discussion. Someone could always make a motion that we continue the discussion further. So um, at this point, whoever would like to uh kick things off and share your uh thoughts and or questions, feel free to do so. If you can just physically raise your hand, I'll then call on you. Uh, trustee Reed.
Hi, Julie. This isn't actually, um, I'm not volunteering or asking to go first. I just thought this would be more of a discussion where we could ask questions and get answers from Dr. Timas, maybe answers from staff members who might be here. Uh, so I just am verifying that you're sure you're going to do it like statements, not a.
You can ask questions as well, whatever comments, questions you have. Do you want to start us off?
Not particularly.
Okay, trustee Gold.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Shoemaker. I've quite a few questions. What efforts are being made to identify and secure community service partners, collaborators to support DCS efforts for safety and education? My experience in working in schools is that schools, they don't have the capacity to meet all the essential needs. So there would need to be uh certain community collaborators. I believe it's essential. Uh, DCS cannot do this work alone. So I think that that would be a positive thing for uh families and uh staff to know who the partners are in the community who are willing to support in these efforts. Another question. It is imperative for parents and staff to be thorough and complete with the emergency contact information. What efforts are there to get accurate and complete information? I know that in past, that um some of the information is not accurate or thorough. And I think in these times, it uh there needs to be an effort to make sure that uh the information is updated and accurate so that uh should, when something happens, uh, we're able to make contact with the right appropriate people. Has there been consideration or a voluntary poll to support high-risk staff and to meet their needs? Staff, they're high-risk, they have illnesses, chronic issues, acute issues. What's being considered for them and what efforts to meet their needs? Let's see. So I know that there's a lot of issues with uh Wi-Fi at home usage currently. Any consideration for Wi-Fi at home, my family has been over. Any consideration for Wi-Fi at home? My family has been over the limit of internet usage the last few months. So what type of supports are there for families who are experiencing that? And, you know, there's certainly fees associated with that. Any considerations for parents who cannot be home with their children and or support their learning? What supports will be available for families and students who are having difficulty with students engaging and participating in the online learning? Learning has been profoundly impacted as a result of the pandemic and students are behind. I think that should be assumed. And can you speak to any remedial learning that will take place? And I think this is probably a common thing, but I'm just gonna put it out there also. How and when will communication of positive tests or students, staff or families be shared? And then I have. Did you say one second?
Yeah, just wanted to read that.
Okay, uh, and we as a board passed the anti-racist and culturally responsive learning resolution, what considerations to ensure these efforts occur in this upcoming school year? This is a critical need in Dexter Community Schools and it should be addressed simultaneously with the pandemic learning considerations. That is, I'm complete with my question.
Okay, let me work at answering. My slideshow is gone, hold on, because on slide. Let me find it. So for your last question about the anti-racist resolution, we included it's on one of our slides here as far as content, let me keep going through, I'll find it. We actually included for subject areas, one of the things, one of the areas is diversity, belonging, inclusion and equity that we would have lessons. I can't find the slide. It's on one of them early on. Oh, there it is. It's on round slide 15, 16, 17 for scheduling considerations that we would cover English, language, arts, math, science and social studies, specialist areas, lunch and recess, social emotional learning and diversity, belonging, inclusion, inclusion and equity learning. As part of the core of what we want to cover in classes. For looking at community partnerships and collaborators, this is a always a challenge here in Dexter. We do work with, we've historically worked with Rotary with several programs and they are, they have supported our alternative ed students. The Lions are interested in how they could help. We just haven't quite narrowed down how yet and faith in action is always a great support for our kids. And outside of those groups, we don't have a lot of local groups, like we don't have a local YMCA or some of the those types of programs that would help. We generally as a school district seem to be provide services through our community education department. We would, we would be interested in some partners. I am actually meeting with, I won't say the exact company, but a large automotive company about testing tomorrow and what their capacity might be to support us. So, but we don't have a lot of local organizations that are direct with our youth that are part of the school district. Like even seriously is, we're the fiscal agent for seriously. So they are, they fall under our umbrella to be able to help, but they're a community group. Accurate information as far as contacts for families, this has been, we are, we're way better than we were, but we're still not there. We, every year when the students come back, we have the parents update. And we use Registration Gateway and that cleaned up better than it used to back with the old cards that we had to fill out. The more communication we've been sending out, the better the data is actually starting to get. Because people are either they've unsubscribed at some point or they haven't updated the numbers. It is synced, everything we do is synced up with what they fill out Registration Gateway. So that's where we have to keep scrubbing data and hope, could hope knows more about how our process is, but it's better than it was. It's still not perfect because people change phone numbers pretty frequently and they may not update us as often as we'd like. The more alerts we send out, the more data we get back, like we'll call a number and they'll let us know it's not the right number anymore. So that helps us them back check in the system to see who it was.
I think we'll get participation this year because we don't want to miss anything and it would have been better this year than last year because that's been the trend. But I think people will be more careful about it and we can see Jason in the system who has updated and who hasn't. And so more aggressively reach out to those people that haven't than we have in the past because we've had, you know, when they're in person, we can catch them in person. But having that data in the system, we can identify people who have not updated.
As far as polling our staff for who's high risk and their needs, we're working on that right now. We met with all of our staff on Friday and they are filling out, we've, we first did it through the unions so that they didn't feel like it came directly to the district. And then now we're, we've worked with the unions to be able to get the information out, find who has different high risks and needs and what we might have to do to support. Or if the coming into a building is just not an option, we know of some staff that that is just not an option. Wi-Fi, we ended up, we secured devices to be able to pass out for Wi-Fi this year in the spring. And we set up a whole group that of staff that would meet with fa- or talk to families and help coach them through all the options. We ended up only handing out a handful of those devices, the hotspots. We did work with a lot of families to help them try to navigate what Comcast or Charter or other providers would offer. It's not perfect. We know that in the spring, AT&amp;T, I believe Verizon and some of the other companies increased if families called, we coached them through to increase their data that was allowed, but it does chew up pretty quickly. So we have not, there is the Washington broadband group, but I don't think they're going to be able to address it as a county as fast as they want. We tried to get part of a big federal grant for a rural school district, but we're not rural enough. Couple of our neighbors are. Our, our housing pattern does not fit the definition per square mile. So we're still, we don't have it exactly. It's not perfect what we've done with Wi-Fi and we're going to need to support as much or more than we did in the past. And we're just going to keep working with this team to kind of work through. We did analysis in the spring of what parts of the district have access and who does not. So as they, as we've talked with families, we've been able to look at our maps and guide them to what does have access, what does not. It's not perfect though. There's parts, huge dead spots in the district with no, no option. That's why we've cranked up outside the buildings. We'd like to get kids in the buildings as soon as it's safe. Outside is safer. Considerations for parents who can't be home with kids, we are wrestling with what to do on this. There is talk, a national trend to form these pods, these learning pods. We're wrestling with what the district's role might be in that kind of concept and how we do this. We have not come up with an answer yet. And how, what our role would be or how to even facilitate it. There are informal pods that are formed by community members and parents. And we're still wrestling with how we want to do it. We may ask in the survey to find out who's in a pod or not, just to help ourselves out to figure out who has access, who doesn't. I wish there was unlimited funds and options because when I look at what's happening with the universities, given the current economy, we have a group of recent graduates and then we have a group of students that are going to college that are going into the unknown that really seems like a group we could tap into to support in some way, shape and form with the right training. Students who are behind and need supports, we're going to do a screener, we're going to probably use NWEA remotely. We're working on how to do that right from the start so we can screen where the kids are and then back look at our curriculum to see what adjustments we need to make. We're also looking at how to do a mental health screener remotely. That's a little more tricky, but we're working through all the different options that are out there and trying to navigate what we think we could actually execute remotely and get good data. And how and when, if we have a positive test, how, when that'll be shared. So what we are finding from the health department as we run through the scenarios is, and again, this was as of two weeks ago. So if we have a student who's positive in a class, the health department would first ask if, who was within six feet of that student for 15 minutes or longer? So if they were within six feet for 15 minutes or longer, they would have to be quarantined. We would, as far as notifications, we have to try to navigate how we notify without violating HIPAA and FERPA and all these other issues. Right now, what we, our starting point is we'd like to notify everybody, everyone. And then we have to find out if we're not allowed to do that, what are, what is the next level we can do? But our plan right now would be to notify everyone. We're just not sure we're legally allowed to yet. So we're still navigating how we do that without violating other laws, especially if it's a staff member that tests positive because then we run into the employment issues with HIPAA. I think that was the, that was the list from Jason, I think.
Another board member who would like to go next. Trustee Bruterly.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I know there are sort of limitless questions and I started preparing for tonight by developing a huge long list of questions. I think it's really important though that as a board, we sort of start voicing some of the opinions that we're hearing from people in the community. And I know it's been really nice to hear the questions both during the Q and A and during the public participation here because it gives us a wide range of perspectives from what people are thinking about. I guess I'm going to dive right into more of a statement and it kind of covers a lot of different things that people have been pulling in tonight. So first, obviously, I want to thank the district personnel who have worked so diligently to put together a plan for three different teaching scenarios and who have been so upfront about the challenges to this plan. It's clear that we're talking about returning to learning in the middle of a global pandemic and that the circumstances aren't even close to normal. The challenge that we have as parents, myself included, is to not compare this plan to what we imagined this year would start like and to not compare it to the previous years. Of course, we all want students back in school. I don't think there's any disagreement about the fact that the school environment is the best place to educate kids. If you talked to me in June, I was ready to put my kids on the bus and send them to school. I was really disappointed we had summer break. What I am worried about though is that what we've been seeing over the summer is that when restrictions are eased up and people are in close proximity, the virus is spreading. We're seeing reports daily about positive tests within Major League, Major League Baseball at summer camps, at schools who started this week and at schools in countries like Israel who had local numbers under control before returning to school. We know in our own community that there are kids testing positive and there are families who are dealing with severe illness. The health context that we're making these return to school plans in matters greatly. And in the starkest of terms, the discussion of going back to school has to include the likelihood of passing virus to teachers and kids who will then pass the virus within the community. The risks of this can include extended illness, long-term health effects and death. Opening schools is a loosening of restrictions and we have to ask ourselves if this is a risk we're willing to take. So with this context in place, I want to offer some thoughts on the education side of things. We know that schools provide an essential service for kids. They provide structure, they provide stability and socialization. Schools are usually some of the first services reopened after a natural disaster. Unfortunately, in this case, it's that exact bringing together of people that can cause illness and by extension, trauma. I am a social worker and I take the mental health angle to this discussion very seriously. I understand that kids need people, they need structure, expectations, motivation and success. For this reason, I'm concerned about using a plan that could result in multiple quick pivots between in-person learning and online learning. I see that instability as detrimental to both learning and mental health. I am confident that our school professionals will be able to address students' mental health needs, whether in a virtual or an in-person setting. Also in looking at this plan, I'm struck by the fact that we have asked educators to be responsible for making decisions with regard to health and safety. I have no doubt that teachers can put together a plan to educate our kids in whatever setting is required. I'm interested though that we've deferred the decision about what that setting should look like to them as well. I believe we're asking them to shoulder a burden that should not be theirs alone. The fact that the metrics being discussed for in-person options are varying from community to community around us strikes me as insufficient, especially a sports team, should they be allowed to play, may cross those community lines on a daily basis. The health and safety protocols that have been presented tonight, while currently best practice, are designed to lower risk. But we don't necessarily have scientific proof that they will by a statistically significant amount. Maybe they lower risk by 5% or maybe 95%. So while I appreciate the district's intention to use 14 days of reduced cases before increasing the return to school stage, I wonder if this is long enough and I wonder if a combination of metrics might be more reassuring for families. Perhaps we might consider a starting point such as requiring the infection rate to be a certain number or lower and then also seeing stable or falling numbers of new cases locally or in our community. In thinking about what we have seen here tonight, I actually see two separate issues. First is the educational plan. What do we want our kids to learn this year, how we want them to learn and whether, under less desirable and perhaps incomplete formats, we will be able to have them make adequately yearly, make adequate yearly progress. The conversation about the educational plan is important. Parents want reassurance that their kids will get something out of this year, that they'll learn to read, that they'll be prepared for the next grade level or that they will be college-ready. Many parents are already concerned about their kids being behind from last spring and wonder what starting this year is going to look like as it is. It strikes me that the vast majority of the plan presented tonight was about the physical requirements of bringing students into buildings. This is an enormous undertaking and it is understandable that this was the focus of the plan. But for me, it highlights the distinction between providing our kids with an education and managing their physical location. It is important that our educators have time and focus necessary to figure out how to educate kids in challenging circumstances. I also understand the enormous challenges facing families. An overnight change of options for childcare have stretched family resources, exposed workplace inflexibility and highlighted inequity. I do believe that schools can play a role in these issues, but I am concerned about mixing educational programming decisions with the care and keeping of children. I appreciate the diversity of students that the district serves and understand that some students may need more assistance to meet their educational needs. I also appreciate that not all parents have the resources, the supervision, the internet, et cetera, to help their kids at home. So I am supportive of the work that's been done to bring students back into the building safely. I think this work will be useful and necessary as we move forward this year. I have significant concerns about beginning the school year in person until we know that families are a few weeks out from vacations and family reunions and until we know that what the numbers across the state have stabilized or are falling for a few weeks. The trend of increasing cases has been moving north all summer and with the several week-long delay for infection, testing and reporting, it's really important to feel confident in the stability of local viral spread. I believe returning kids to a safe classroom is more important than returning them quickly. I believe that our teachers can rise to any challenge and will be able to deliver a program that is unique and effective. We have never had as many tools to educate kids as we do right now and I believe our kids will show us that they can rise to the occasion of using them. I know that some kids, sorry?
Sorry, this time.
Oh, okay. Can I be really fast or can I use one of my three minutes later?
That's fine.
Okay. To sum up, the significant logistical issues involved in bringing students back in a stage four environment have me concerned. Whether we're talking about providing multiple learning plans simultaneously, staffing at a time when we know we will have absences and possibly significantly long absences, filling bus driver and substitute teacher positions and the costs involved in purchasing PPE and cleaning supplies without funding promises makes me significantly concerned about opening schools in person during stage four. The way that I read the data, it's not a question of if, but when there will be positive cases in our schools. And I think it's incumbent upon our community to support a plan where the risk of disruption is significantly less than it appears to be right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Trustee Reed.
Hi, thank you. So I have one quick question before I really get started, but will homeroom have grades? Yes, great. Okay, thanks. And so what I wanted to just bring forth here from, I clicked on the links in your presentation, I I tried to read deeply into that. One thing that I read in the Harvard Global Health One thing that I read in the Harvard Global Health Institute was, which I think, I think is significant. It says, "The shift to online learning, while harmful for all kids, also exacerbates the existing racial and socioeconomic disparities in education and risks setting back an entire generation of children." So what I take from that is, we don't want to be unsafe, we don't want to, you know, have any staff member put in a dangerous position or students unsafe. But what I hear from that is that we want to open as soon as it's safely possible. And so one of my questions is, and you could explain this tonight or maybe, you know, some other Q and A opportunity, but if you could explain more to me why we need to start with young five through fourth grade and then when they're, when they're attending every day, then we can start bringing in the fifth through eighth graders. And when they're attending every day, then we bring in the nine through twelve graders. And earlier this evening, I heard you say maybe we could bring in middle school and high school at the same time. But that's one of my questions is just, I would like to hear more about that. If it's, if the concerns are, you know, anyway, educationally, as soon as the kids can be in class, we want them to be there safely, obviously. And then the other thing I want to share is that, let's see, actually, I basically just said it, so I'm gonna skip that part. Okay, so I'm gonna move on. And so I'm gonna kind of echo what Elise said where she was talking about that we can have multiple metrics. And so one of the things that I did also this evening was, you know, or not this evening, but this weekend, was to click through the links and, you know, kind of look through all that. And one of my concerns is that using this consistent decline, consistently declining metric, I could picture a scenario where the cases rise to an alarming number, you know, a hundred new cases a day and then consistently decline down to only eighty cases a day. And considering that we're currently at four point seven new cases per day in Washtenaw County, I think eighty cases a day would still be alarming. I could also picture a scenario where the number of infections is so low, maybe even, you know, averaging below one per day and then it rises to one per day or one point two per day. Where on the, on the graph, anything under one per day is green, which I guess is, they don't label it, but it must be like good because it's green. And then would that, you know, would that rise? So if we're consistently at point five or point eight and then it rises to one per day or one point one, that's, that's not consistently declining. So I think it's really important to make sure that our families know and that our staff knows, you know, what, where are the numbers coming from? What exactly are we going to use? And so then, just for examples, a couple of the other metrics I noticed that I think could be helpful are that right now in Washtenaw County, the, the number of infect, the infection rate is currently in the green around point eight people with a note that that can change. And what that means is that on average, each person who gets infected is infecting point eight people. Obviously, you can't do that, but you know, it's, it's math. And so I'm wondering, what infection rate are we looking for? Could, could it be, is it, are we looking for point eight is too high? Would it be point five people per infected person, point two five, or are we actually looking for zero? And I just think it's important to, yeah, I understand you're having a meeting with the Washtenaw County Health Department later this week with other representatives from school districts, and I think that would be a good question, maybe something to talk about. I also look at the positive test rate as a useful metric. And so also from the link from Washtenaw County Health Department, there's a quote from the World Health Organization that says, "The World Health Organization recommends a positive test rate of less than ten percent. The countries most successful in containing COVID have rates of three percent or less. We calculate..." Anyway, they talk a little bit more about that. And so what I notice is that Washtenaw County has been right around three percent since May twenty-first. It really hasn't changed much. Maybe went slightly over, maybe it's gone slightly under. And I'm wondering what positive test rate would be desirable for a return to school? Is that something we could also ask the county health department? Would it be a consistent positive test rate under two percent? Are we looking for a consistent positive test rate under one percent? Are we looking for zero? So these are things, you know, I don't have the answers to it, but I really like the idea of looking at multiple metrics and I think that the simple statement of consistently declining new infections may not actually be the wording that, that we're going to be able to hang our hat on. And so not at all saying, so, oh, yeah, at the, I attended an M A S B meeting, well, I've attended a couple of them with the whole, you know, whoever is able to attend and Governor Whitmer was at one of them and then we had our state superintendent at another one. He's been really good meetings. One thing that I've gotten from them is that it's really, there's a reason why these are local decisions. And that's because you really want to work closely with the, with the county health department. And, and I understand we're gonna be doing that, you know, we have done that, we'll be doing it later this week. And so I'm not at all saying to veer from that, but I think the actual numbers would help families have confidence and to really get behind the timeline. Rather than, well, you know, when it's been declining, well, declining from high, declining from low, what if it goes up a little bit? But it's still super safe, you know, what, what are we looking at? And also, my last thought is that countywide, at the meeting this week, I'm wondering if you would be able to bring up the idea of using, you know, some specific numbers that families can kind of watch, you know, follow along with us and see when we're gonna hit those and, and then they'll understand if we do hit them and we have to, you know, we have to bounce back a little bit and say, you know, we're, we're not able to continue, we're gonna make some changes. I think they'll be better able to understand that with actual, you know, numbers to look at. And I wonder if, if the health department might be able to help to create some of those benchmarks where everyone will feel safe, listened to and also understood. I also have concerns about families who, where it's a single working parent or two working parents or even, you know, parents who might be home but have other things they need to do or health conditions or situations where it's going to be hard to teach the kids. And so, and I'm very sensitive to what Jason said about the cost of internet. There are families who, simply for the cost of internet, are looking at other options, perhaps not continuing in Dexter schools. And so, you know, a survey for that might be helpful. And this, the last thing I'd like to share is that I, you know, in line with what Elise said about bringing in what we're hearing, I'm very concerned about the number of families who are maybe not planning to, to stay with Dexter schools going forward. And I think getting this plan out is super, so people can really see what's going on. I love that we're having the meeting on Thursday. But I would love, I will reiterate, I've asked this probably even since before I got on the board. I would love if we could have exit surveys for families who do, you know, temporarily, hopefully, withdraw their kids. You know, what specifically are their concerns? What could we do to meet those? And what can we do to help them, you know, return to Dexter schools? And so.
You're muted.
Okay, thanks. And, and I don't know that people are necessarily gonna come to us and tell us. So like I hear it around, but the numbers I'm hearing do cause me to be concerned and I think it would be important to find out, how many kids are we expecting? And what can we do to reach out to them and to meet their needs better? So, thank you.
That was nine minutes just away.
Oh, great. I'm done. I won't come back.
Ms. Vestegard, if you will keep us on track, though, and let board members know when they're at six and a half minutes and they can wrap up within the seven minutes.
Because I say it and I don't know if people hear it.
I didn't hear it. I don't know if anyone else did, but thank you for just keeping us on track. Would one of our school board, student representatives want to go next?
I can go.
Great. Anna?
I have one question about the new curriculum with diversity, equity, and inclusion and how it's gonna be included into the school year. Because on the slideshow, it's marked as a different course than the core classes like English and math. So I'm wondering if it's gonna be taught separately or if all teachers have had the training for this curriculum.
You're muted right now.
Noticed, sorry. That's a great question. The teachers that have been trained to be leading that work, still working out the details of what they would teach and how, given the remote environment, it's gonna have to be within context somehow. We would be, we really, as a school, given where we are as a country right now and everything that's happened since March, we need to help work with our kids on, on their understanding so they can contextualize where we are as a society. And so it'll probably be taught within context, especially at the later grades. I can see it being in the English and social studies courses for the most part, but we are still working with teachers on how that would look. We wanted to outline it on the slides just so we can hold ourselves accountable and make sure we included that we have, we are committed to this work.
Anna, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I have one more thing. A couple of the public participants brought up that the home-based learning, they were wondering if there would be daily communication with face-to-face with teachers over Zoom. And I don't know if Aiden felt this as well, but for some of my classes, I didn't speak with a teacher for about two weeks in the spring and motivation was super difficult. So I'm wondering how that would work. And also, students who maybe are not engaging, how will they be reached if emails and calls aren't responded to, since you won't be seeing them face-to-face?
All right, great questions. We will, what we did in the spring will not be what we do this fall. We learned from the spring to improve what we do this fall. The, we know that there, we need to check in with students on a daily basis. We know there's context where, and think about it, a high school class, you have to have class discussions about different topics and we have to create the opportunities for that, whether we're in the, in the building or we're in a virtual setting. As far as contacting and staying, engaging with students, we started strong when we first let out. One of the challenges was being in phase three. We weren't allowed to go out to homes and things like that. We would probably, we think we can get some protocols to make that happen and build the layers to really track down kids now and get them to engage. We're gonna set up more structures so that kids are engaged on a regular basis. Even with the home base, there will be structures where they're engaged with the teacher on a regular basis. It won't be for multiple hours of Zoom at a time, but it'll be on a regular schedule to be able to engage kids. It can, we don't, we, I think, given the situation, we did pretty well in the fall or in the spring, but that was not what we need to do for the fall. We've had months to ramp up and we planned to ramp, we've ramped it. It'll be ready to go. It's, we're working.
Okay, I actually just thought of one more thing. In the spring, there were like weekly check-ins, but a lot of them were just Google Forms and all you had to do was say that you received the information. But since there weren't grades, you didn't actually have to do any of the work. So I'm just recommending that maybe those check-ins are actually face-to-face and making sure that students have the opportunity to ask questions or get help because it's difficult to continuously like email someone because you feel like you're bothering them, because you know this is difficult for the teachers as well.
And one thing we'll do is we have to work through different ways of pupil accounting, given the rules right now. And that will actually help us keep ourselves forming contact in a certain way. So we'll be doing regular contacts with kids, assignments due at certain times, multiple layers of being able to check in with our students. We know that was a problem in the spring. And then, did you want me to address any of the questions that Barbara asked or Elise asked?
Yes. That's fine.
Okay. So Barbara asked about the Harvard study, then she, you asked about why bringing young fives through fourth grade in. That was actually in the Harvard study to say that the first priority should bring in your little kid, your youngest first and then work, we tried to structure as close as we can. We've wrestled with make it young fives or six first or do we, their recommendation was kindergarten through fifth grade, but we had the fifth and sixth grade building, so we wrestled with how to do that. The reason for the twenty-five percent then to fifty is really just trying to work through the logistics. Everything from getting onto a bus to staggering kids coming into a building, to getting them into classes, to keeping the distancing, to working in the wash, or the hand washing breaks, to work in the masks, to work in the protocols, to get them down the hall. It's gonna take some sta, some staging and work through. It'll look good on paper, but until we get the bodies in, it's gonna be a logistical challenge. It's so, essentially, we are recreating an entire school district by fall when we bring these kids in, where our normal protocols, we can't utilize, ones that we've trained them since they were five to do. So then when we look at the middle and high school, the high school is logistically the most difficult. The nature of a high school schedule and the nature, the design of the building is, is truly the most difficult. So we wanted to figure out how to phase in so we could fit, so we could. So, you know, here are some high schools, there are some in the area that are built for much more capacity than the number of bodies in the building. That is actually an advantage in this situation because they can do the cleaning and the flow different because they have empty rooms. Our high school is built for twelve hundred students, we have twelve hundred students. So we're at a hundred percent capacity, so trying to maximize how we can flow students back and forth, we need to limit the numbers at first so we can kind of work out the logistics. Because what we know, what we think will work, we know won't when we see what kids do. We have all the signs ordered for the arrows on the floor to go with directions. We have to figure out restrooms. We, to make, if you read that Harvard report, they really talk about the type of facilities you need. And one of the challenges we have is that our HVAC systems, our buildings were built to be closed systems. The windows weren't designed to be opened. So it's a complete overhaul. The districts are trying to use a UV system as best they can, but it's not really showing if that truly works or not. That's a quicker update than putting in the, the MERV thirteen filters. Our classroom filters right now are one inch. The MERV thirteens are three or four inches, so we have to rework every one of those systems to try to get it set up. In the high school in particular, it's one of our only buildings, it's multiple floors and it's three stories. So that third floor opening windows is probably not gonna keep it cool. So we're trying, that's part of the reason for the logistical staggering, is trying to work out these bugs and the systems. That's elementary, we want to stagger the numbers so that we can figure out playgrounds. And lunches, lunches are gonna be a giant challenge. When we get a hundred percent of our high school kids in the building, not using the cafeteria like we normally would, is gonna be a logistical challenge to get lunches and not start at nine o'clock and finish at two with serving lunch.
Can I just do a quick follow-up to that? My, my question was about kind of starting them at the same time. And I, I thought the Harvard study kind of implied or, or said that if, if you don't have the resources to do it all at the same time, and so I understand that we're gonna bring in twenty-five percent, see how it goes or maybe just, you know, academically fragile kids first, see how that goes, roll it out. I understand that and, you know, the plan is, is clear. But I was just kind of wondering, why, if we have different buildings with different staff, you know, just something to think about. You don't have to answer it today, but just, you know, if the goal is to get them in as quick as possible. They are different buildings, it is different staff, and it might be that, that they could, if we have the resources, that it could be done.
And one of the, one of the reasons, as of last week when we finished this draft, the studies had been showing that ten-year-olds and younger did not spread the disease like adults. Since then, there have been multiple reports that they might. So that's one of the things we're now having to wrestle with. Even Friday, we had it ready to go. We sent it out Friday night or Saturday. We found out about the school in Indiana, made it one day. Found out about the camp in Georgia. I mean, it's the information, that's why we're going through this process to get as much input as we can before we have to finalize the plan. And it's a draft, so this feedback's great to help us. The metrics are going, we really, I agree, we need to revise the metrics and come up with multiple indicators and multiple points of data. It's just, what are the right ones?
So in the interest of time, I want to move us on to other board members, so we all have an opportunity to ask questions or share our thoughts. Is there, Aiden, would you like to go next?
Yes, there is one or two things I'd like to say. But one thing that didn't really seem like it was addressed, but doesn't really contribute to how they'd how the school district is handling things is you don't know what people in your classroom have been exposed to outside of school. And so someone could have been exposed to it, but asymptomatic. And there are some reports that asymptomatic people can spread it. So, and then I think, so my second part of my question to that is, um, I think it would be very disruptive for the school district to, um, or at least if you had a class where someone tested positive once in that class and/or the school has shut down for two weeks. I feel it would be disruptive to having, if you had to open schools and then repeatedly close it, like a back-and-forth type thing.
That's the crux of the issue, on how to ma- navigate it.
Thank you. Anything else, Aiden?
Yeah, so, um, another thing that I thought was interesting was, um, even though the windows will be down on the bus, how will the bus driver be, when they're focusing on the road, be able to enforce that kids keep their mask on?
Yeah, we've talked about having an extra adult on the bus, but then you have, you're basically paying someone to police them.
Right.
Whether that's the best method. Yeah, I know, kids, well, and we see, I mean, we see kids, we deal with dress code with kids. And they're pretty creative and strong-willed.
Anything else, Aiden?
Um, I noticed that, um, it seems like teenagers and millennials, according to the news, are the spreaders of the second wave. So, um, and I noticed a lot of teenagers, um, don't wear the mask the correct way, like, you know, they say the nose. So will there be a specific guideline for addressing people that don't wear the mask over their nose?
Yeah, we're gonna do training on how to wear the mask appropriately. And if the mask is not worn appropriately, it'd be treated like a dress code violation where you're gonna have to fix it.
Okay.
Anything else, Aiden?
Um, that's all.
Great, thank you. Who would like to go next? Uh, trustee Graterex. You're muted currently, great.
So I, uh, just wanted to add a couple, uh, things. Um, Elise stole my statement, basically. So she said everything that I was gonna say. Uh, I just wanted to thank the school, uh, the staff and Dr. Thomas for, uh, I know it's all the work that you, um, have, have been doing and it's a huge, huge task that we're undertaking and it's it's globally, uh, it's, everybody's
We're getting every, we're getting every other word.
Okay, so how, is this is better?
It's better.
Okay, I'll hold it. Um, so just locally, and I think Barbara said it and I think Elise said it as well, it's, it's a local problem as well. I know I've talked to, um, educators around the state, um, who, you know, the different districts, uh, I have a friend who works in a district where they don't have any COVID cases. They haven't had it at all. And they still have only 25% of the parents when surveyed wanna go back to school. So, um, even when there aren't any cases in the district, they're, you know, it's still a concern about making sure that everyone is safe and, and, um, I just really appreciate all of the factors that are being, um, weighed as well as the mental health factors. And, um, you know, I, on a personal note, I have a senior this year, so, you know, that's huge for her and, you know, we wanna make sure that she's getting what she needs to get to go and be college-ready. And I trust that our district will do whatever it's take, it's going to take to, um, make sure that kids are safe and well-educated, as Elise said. Um, because I think that's a huge primary concern that we need to, um, think about. Um, and that's basically it. I think, uh, we're very lucky in that we have board members who are very smart and who are, have already asked the question and I, questions that I would have asked and also the community members who um, have brought up so many, uh, concerns. The only thing I, the only question I have is because I lost connection for a while, so wifi is a huge concern for me as well. How are you bringing in the, how are you picking the 25% that is coming in and, and so on? If you could just go over that really quick for me, that would be perfect. And, and I yield my time.
Okay, so the 25% is, uh, what we've done so far in our first go at this is we know we have about 680 high school students that have siblings in the district. So, or other household members in the district, so we've gone by household. And so what we're doing is we're trying to navigate their schedules to see how it breaks out during the high school day, to see how the balance is, so we don't end up with classes of 35 that they all happen to take the same classes. And then that group will work to create the group A or group B, whatever it is, and try to get that hu- hashed out at the high school and then we'll work our way through the rest of the buildings to try to get balance and then we'll split that group in half by household. I'm not sure it's gonna work, but we're not gonna know until we finish with the data and there is no easy report to do this. It is, we're just grunting it out.
Can I just have a point of information? Because I've heard people, uh, referring to the 25% a couple of times and I just wanna clarify to make sure I understand and the people who are listening. It looks like from the plan, the 25% will be each student one different day a week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then in what you're talking about with the high school portion is sort of trying to figure out the logistics of how at the high school level kids will get into classes. Is that correct?
The whole district, though, because if we don't figure it out for the high school,
Okay.
it doesn't matter what we do at the elementary, because we need to make sure that when we get to that point, we're keeping families together, especially when they have, they might be counting on the older kids, the sixth graders and up for some childcare support.
Okay.
So what we see, we need to be able to navigate is thinking all the way through and the high school schedule is the hardest. And what this'll mean is we may ha- we're gonna likely have to adjust our class list at K2, 3, 4, et cetera. And we need to have the data sets to work from, knowing what the end, the, at the end, we could be at a point where we got high school kids at 50% of the time, while elementary kids need to be matched up somehow, just for households.
Okay, thank you.
Would someone else like to go next?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go.
Great.
So, the, um, you know, from my perspective, I, um, five, five of my kids are in grades from that will be in grades from fifth grade up to seniors. And i- it's really interesting to, and then I, we have older kids who have graduated. And I think it's to, uh, one of the questions that are there from one of the community members really resonated with me is the, is the need for students, the, the kids to, uh, to gain a perspective on this, kind of this unique situation we're in, this very challenging situation. So that they have, so that they can, uh, help, uh, and I think with appropriate perspective, it's important because that'll help with their motivation, it'll help with their uh, emotional wellbeing, their anxiety. And, you know, even with my, with our sample of kids, you know, there's a whole spectrum of, you know, of emotions from don't really care to highly anxious. And, and I, I think that's something that is, um, that's really gonna be important as we, you know, as, as the school opens in various fashions is to, uh, somehow, and I don't know how to do this, but really factor in the, the importance of the emotional wellbeing of kids and, and finding ways to meet them where they are and, um, so that they can, um, you know, kinda find their way through this or so we can help them get through this period. Because I mean, it's challenging for an adult, it's challenging for me to get through this, uh, period and, you know, kids are, each kid is bringing their own perspective into it. So, the, the, uh, I think another thing that came out, uh, of this, of the presentation, Chris, and the, uh, questions is the, just the complexity of the whole situation, right? That's kind of an understatement, but the, it's an incredibly complex situation. The plan is complex. You know, each parent situation is unique and complex and, you know, it's just like, just, it just seems even to me like it's big jumble. So I think as we go along, there would be, hopefully, the, the plan, as you iterate based on this feedback that we're getting tonight and over the next few days, hopefully the plan will condense down to a point where, you know, it's kind of easier to, for an individual to get their, their head around, uh, what it is, the mechanics of the plan. You know, like, and some of the questions tonight kind of spoke to that, kind of the uncertainty. So, and I, I think that the, the, um, part of the complexity is that, you know, we're, we're opening up. When school starts, uh, we expect the kids, the students to not be on to, to not be on in-person. And then we would, as quickly as possible, kind of segue to that. That's kind of my understanding of it right now. And the, um, so, you know, I, I'm just trying to think of a, of, of a way to, uh, you know, how can we simplify that? So for, so I don't know if this is a good idea, but it's, it's an idea of breaking down into months, you know, so for every 30 days, there's kind of a decision point. And then there's, there might be a, a lead-up, you know, kind of 10 days, you know, after 20 days, there's the decision process. And then there's, uh, kind of a lead time of 10 days to, you know, before the next transition uh, is made. And tha- that way, if you, if we could pace it on a, if, if we build in a pacing, say a, a monthly pacing or every two months or something, at least that would be, uh, it could be something that would allow people to, uh, kind of get, get their head around what's going on and, uh, or be able to organize their, their life and their work and everything in order to, uh, keep track or keep up to date with their current situation. The, um, another point was, um, you know, the decision, the kind of, the decision-making process of the data, you know, how are we gonna decide? Kind of when the students come back or when, when we have to shut down or shut down a class. And I think, um, you know, I, I echo earlier comments from Barbara and Elise and Mara. You know, about the, the really need to look carefully at the data. But, um, what I'm worried about is, or what it would be, it would be great if there was a an independent kind of authority, third-party authority that was, you know, local, maybe, and maybe it's the health department, that, you know, just kind of, uh, reports the state of, you know, kind of the safety state, the safety metrics. And then our condi- our, our responses, the school's responses would just be a function of whatever that the local health or risk state was. And I think, you know, I think that's where you're going towards, but it's kind of unfortunate that there's not one authority. There's not one sort of separate third-party authority that does that. So what I'm worried about is that we're gonna get in a corrosive situation. We're actually highly likely to get in a corrosive situations at school because, you know, there'll be some point in time in the fall where, you know, conditions change in some way that will result in some decision that we make. And Chris will be out front making that decision. And, you know, a large number of people are gonna disagree with it or argue about the basis of that decision. And it's gonna lead to just a, it's likely to lead to really corrosive types of discussions, which are just counterproductive. Because the last thing we need now, I think, is, you know, a high degree of corrosiveness in our community. And so I, I guess flipping around to being a bit more constructive, as you, as you work with the health department and, you know, the state and, uh, if in the process of that, there results in kind of well-understood quantitative metrics that, you know, we use as just inputs that dictate the decisions that we'll make. That would take us out of being kind of the boogeyman to some people, uh, in this process.
I just wanna let you know, we're, we're at eight minutes.
Yeah, okay, that's about all I had to say.
Thank you. And Hope, had you earlier indicated time?
I had, and then I didn't think people heard, so I put it in the chat box that everybody.
Oh, I'm not even looking at the chat box, but I appreciate it and I completely missed your first, your first notice, so. Um, so are you, uh, ready to conclude your comments?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, thank you. Um, was there anything from that you wanna respond to, Dr. Thomas?
No, I mean, the data, we need, I would love to have some third-party group that reviewed the data and gave us information or told us what to do. That's the hardest thing about this entire situation is we're all locally trying to navigate it using the best data we can, we can sometime, and for us, we're, we really wanna look at the data. I was a math major. I mean, it's, it's hard not to look at numbers. It's just kind of ingrained. Um, but knowing if you have good data, how many data points are the right number of data points? And what are the right data points? Um, but we need to base it on data. And I like the concept of decision-making points and the timeline. That's something we should wrestle through this week. I think based on what we heard today, I think that would help clarify as far as the phasing, to try to clarify. I just, I'm open to ideas. If anybody gets some great ideas, draw a picture and send it to me.
Hey, you know, I, I, uh, I, I don't know if the school or the community is kind of, uh, it, it kind of in my experience is, is you're, is if you try to get a group or organization or a group of people sort of aligned, you know, there has to be a, a, like a clear vision and then kind of a, an easy to understand plan that everyone can, can buy into. And, and, you know, in, well, actually, I'll, I won't go. Let me stop so I don't, uh, go pass my time. I have some ideas.
Great. Maybe you can talk, um, i- in the coming days.
Okay.
Trustee Lundie. You need to unmute. You need to unmute. And I wanna apologize, my screen appears to keep flickering. It's either a wifi issue or a computer issue. The lights in my room are not blinking on and off. So I apologize and if for some reason, I just, the link fails, um, I would leave it to, uh, Mara to run the meeting, except I know she might have wifi issues as well. Um, so then, uh, I guess we'll leave it to trustee Lundie to run the meeting if we both fail. So hopefully we can make it through.
Julie, why don't you just go ahead? I've just got a few comments and notes that I've made, so.
Okay. So I guess what I wanna say first off is I know there's just a great deal of loss among our students and our families and our teachers. Um, we all want to return to our normal routine. Um, students miss their teachers and their friends and we're all grieving a sense of normalcy in our lives. I know that our staff lives have also been upended, their jobs have changed dramatically. This is not what any of our staff members, um, kind of signed up for, anticipated. Um, and so it's just, it's something that none of us want and we all have to recognize that a different love- And we all have to recognize that at different levels, we are all grieving in some way that loss of normalcy and a sense of control over our lives. And I very much appreciate the care and the cautious approach that the administration has taken in putting together this return-to-school plan. It is extremely thorough. And, and in spite of the best-laid plans, what, it is just a plan. And it's, and even once the plan is, you know, adopted by the board and sent to the state, that plan will probably change frequently. I mean, after two weeks of experience, I imagine it's going to be a work in progress. And so what the plan in August is may change to September and October. It'll be, and there might need to be periodic updates and feedback to the families and teachers regarding that. Then also, I'm, I'm very thankful that we are not having a rush to reopen our schools as some communities have done. We're beginning to see what happens when children are brought together. Dr. Timas referenced, there was a summer camp in Georgia where all, all campers and staff had to show negative COVID test results before the camp began. And obviously, someone became contagious from the time of their test to their arrival at the camp. And within one week, they had to close the camp. Two hundred and sixty individuals tested positive out of about, it was like four hundred, it was either four or five hundred. And it was three-quarters of those who were tested were positive. So that's what just one individual slipping through the cracks. Obviously, it was a residential camp, so there's more time for exposure. But, and we're seeing other incidents like that as well. Just today, I read that young people in Washtenaw County comprised forty-five percent of the new COVID cases in the last two weeks. And they defined a young person as under thirty, and it's forty-five percent of those cases. There's other recent research that shows that young children have a viral load that's even higher than adults. And so they would have the potential to infect many others while being asymptomatic. It may just be that young children can, they are asymptomatic, and they never develop, you know, full-blown sick sickness, and, but they're able to spread it nonetheless. So the fact that the recommendations from the state, or the requirements are that K-five students do not need to wear a mask, but I, I'm glad we're being cautious. And we can learn from the experience of other school districts. I don't want to jeopardize the health and well-being of our staff members who will be teaching those young children, or the other children in the classroom, one of whom may get very sick from COVID. So again, I really appreciate the cautious approach. And then also, just that the attitudes of each of us, particularly parents, and all of our staff regarding the virtual learning and this year we are all going to have together, will be critical in determining the attitudes of our children and the students that we teach. Children will look to the adults to see what our reactions are. And I think young, children and young people are very resilient and very adept, often more easily than those of us who are older do. So I, I think we just really need to realize, this is an unusual point in time in all of our lives. You know, the last pandemic, worldwide pandemic was in nineteen eighteen, and none of us were there to experiencing it. So this will be something we will all tell our children and grandchildren about in the future. And hopefully, we can get through this unique year of education together, until there's a vaccine or effective treatment. And then we can go back closer to what is normal. But I imagine our new normal will also be different, because we will now learn new techniques of, of teaching students and reaching out. And we will change our practices going forward for the better. So some overall thoughts that I have. I would be interested in the district looking at what it would take to upgrade our HVAC system. We are in the position of having recently passed a bond, and even though we did not set aside a million dollars for our HVAC system, this will likely not be the only reason for upgrading HVAC there. It will likely have long-term benefits for our district. So I think it would be worth looking into that and the timeframe for, for doing so. I also think we should seriously look at limiting busing. I do feel that it's important to have transportation provided for those families that are unable to transport their students to, to school. But if we know that social distancing and wearing masks are the two most effective steps we can take right now, putting students on a, in close proximity on a bus with closed windows, without good air exchange, to me, would be a high-risk situation. And I would imagine many of our families would feel likewise. But for those families that absolutely depend on buses to get their children to school, then we could accommodate that. Also, it would be important for our teachers to have opportunities to work with parents, like Zoom, you know, virtual Zoom meetings with parents, to talk about how to help, they can help their students. Our parents need the support to most effectively support their kids. And then we definitely need to build in time to address the social, emotional issues for all of our students. Mental health issues have been, among our young people, have been increasing the levels of anxiety and depression even before COVID. And of course, it is increasing all of our anxiety and stress. So I think that needs to be built right into the, the, the weekly schedule for all of our students. And then some additional questions is, has, have to do with cleaning of our bathrooms. Obviously, that's a shared space. And, you know, I've been reading a lot about those, you know, flushing of toilets and hand dryers, circulating, you know, germs in the bathrooms. And so the frequency of cleaning of those facilities would be critical. I think it was, Barbara had previously mentioned about the metrics to be used for deciding when schools reopen. I do think having some fixed metrics, not just the declining rate, but just some fixed metrics that we can look to, whether that might be the prevalence of COVID, or the positivity rate. Is that for Washtenaw County? Is it just for the Dexter zip code? But having those fixed metrics, I think, would be reassuring for everyone. I also am wondering what percentage of our teachers are comfortable resuming to face-to-face instruction, as well as our paraprofessionals and our bus drivers and, and other staff? And then what if a staff member gets sick? What if, on the job exposure to COVID, and we have a staff member who's sick, will there be some other pool of days that they can use for their sick days? Or will each staff member be required to first use up their own personal sick days to cover that?
I just wanted to let you know, we've gotten past your time.
Okay. I will save my other questions. But thank you. So now I'll open it. I think everyone's spoken once. So if anyone has any follow-up thoughts or questions?
I haven't.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, you shouldn't have let me go next. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dick.
Apologize to the degree I echo other comments. I've made a few notes here during the course of the evening. I guess I'd like to start out by pointing out that even though I may appear to be the token old man on the board, my virtual son, grandson, did have a graduation party yesterday, finally. And we're, as a family, struggling a little bit with the five-year-old and how things are going to work with him, starting in kindergarten. So we still have folks at both ends of the spectrum that we're pretty close to. The first thing I really want to say is how much I appreciate the efforts of the leadership staff, the professional staff, in how hard they've worked to put together a pretty detailed plan, recognizing that, as Julie said, that it is just a plan. It's a starting point. One of the things that I think is a real strength of the district is the culture that we have of innovation and creativity. And I think we're well-positioned with the way that all the staff members work together to learn what works and what doesn't work, to continuously improve things as they develop. And so I, I just think that's a real positive for the district, that, that we have that level of leadership that is flexible and willing to learn and adapt. I think one of the things that's always been a part of our culture is, we're here to serve students and the community. And so we've tried to do that by providing a great level of flexibility. And I think one of the things that's very important in the plans, after you put the safety, which has been confirmed to be the highest issue probably for everybody in the district, that we do have the ability for parents to have choice and see what they think works for their situation and what they're most comfortable with. I've got real confidence that, that the leadership is going to base their decisions on the best data available. One of the frustrations is that I wish the experts were really actually more expert, because I, I don't think that anybody has any good, solid answers. And I think that have to look at a number of sources and ultimately see what's, we're going to feel most comfortable with. One of the things that I hope we might be able to facilitate is some kind of socialization of small groups of kids. Even if we can't have classrooms full of kids, if somehow we can set something up where small groups can get some kind of social interaction in a safe way, I think that's something that might be valuable outside of the regular curriculum issues. I think that it's obvious at this point that the community sentiment is that if we're going to err, it wants to be on the side of safety. And I'm confident that, that we will do that. So. I think that, that's, that's probably the, the gist of my thoughts at the moment. I consider tonight a great learning experience. Not only do I appreciate the staff, but I'm really impressed with the amount of engagement from the community. Appreciate the participation tonight and the level of engagement. And I think that's going to be a great value as we move forward.
Great. So at this point, every board member would have an opportunity to speak a second time for up to three minutes. For those of you that went over on the first go-round, if you could reduce your time accordingly, it's just about twenty minutes to ten. And it would be nice to be able to wrap up by ten o'clock. So who would like to follow up with some questions or a comment? If you raise your hand, I can then call on you. Trustee Ree.
Thank you, Julie. I think I can probably keep it under a minute. Just a couple, something that I noticed on the survey responses was that the grades that were most interested in in-person school, it seemed to me, were eleventh and twelfth graders. Understandably, they're coming to the end of their high school career. Junior year is often considered to be one of the most important years of school, as kids prepare for a life beyond high school. And so I just want to point out that if there's some way to get those kids back part-time, I think that they would appreciate that. My second question is, just, just a follow-up with the face shield. And you don't have to answer that tonight, but I've had other parents ask the same thing. I thought a face shield would be really great. I tried one. I actually went back to mask. I feel more comfortable in it. But, and my other question is regarding AP classes. So my son's had a Michigan Virtual High School class in the past. I don't know if it would run exactly the same way or not, but he, it was not a Dexter teacher. It's a Michigan Virtual High School teacher. She was great, but there wasn't really, it was a traditional online class. So he did his work at his own pace, on his own schedule during the day. And then would turn in projects and kind of, you know, communicate via a little chat with some of the other kids in the class. And so my question is whether our AP classes specifically, would they be Michigan Virtual High School classes if the kids take the, I'm just going to call it the online version, or, or the, the home-based version? And then if it's the homeschool, homeroom version, would that be with, with Dexter teachers? And so that's just a, you know, a lot of kids take AP classes. It might have an impact on which classes they select, or what year they do it. They might choose to take it this year, or put it off to next year. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Dr. Timas, I'm going to ask you to hold your responses. So if everyone can just have an opportunity to speak, and if we have any more time before it's ten o'clock, then if you want to address something, otherwise you can just consider the questions as you refine your plan. Is there someone else that would like to ask any follow-up questions or make a comment? Trustee Bruterly?
So, I guess I just want to, in thinking about what everything, everything that everyone has said here tonight, I want to make a comment about risk, and the level of risk, and what type of decisions we're making. You know, when you look at the news, I hope that, you know, I hope a vaccine is coming soon. Everyone's very positive. We don't know if it's going to happen, but it sounds good. So I think as a board, we need to think about this as hopefully a short-term situation. And as Daryl said, helping get our kids through that this year, and trying to make the best of a bad situation. They're all watching us live through situations we didn't expect in our personal lives and our work lives. Along those lines, I think it's important to think about, and I, I said this a little bit earlier, so I won't, I won't get too into it, but we don't know what matters, you know? So I, the HVAC system, it sounds good to upgrade. I actually had a conversation with a friend yesterday who's a pediatric ICU doctor. Her very first comment to me was HVAC systems can be problematic. Did you see the data about the way it spreads in a restaurant to be pulling air through a room? So I am concerned that the district and the board is going to have to make decisions based on bad and incomplete information. So I guess I just want all of us to be really thoughtful about the types of things that we're weighing, and about whether those things really matter. As a board member right now, the very last thing I want to hear is that a kid or a teacher got sick, and worse than that, was hospitalized or had long-term issues. So my main concern is being really thoughtful about not getting sucked into the idea of, you know, we can make this better, let's make it better. We really need to say, is that good enough? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have some follow-up questions. And again, you don't need to address these now. But I was also thinking about the issue of pods. I had read about how some families had created a pod with like three families, and wondered if we might be able to place our students in classrooms or cohorts based upon where they live, to allow students to potentially, families to potentially connect with maybe one, two, or three other students who live in close proximity. Normally, we do not, we do not develop our class lists in that fashion. But I think it would be valuable to allow families, at their choosing, but if they knew that people in their area had Um, but if they knew that people in their area had children in the same grade and in the same classroom, they could then decide whether the risk of that family in their own meshed um, and they were willing to have those kids socialize and interact with each other. Um, another um, is while instruction is virtual, will all extracurricular events, including sports, also be virtual? I know that we have teams now that are practicing as if that fall sports season can take place. Um, I, I really questioned whether we should be having those sports take place, particularly those that are contact sports. I mean, we know this is a respiratory disease. Close proximity and exerting an effort is going to put those teams at high risk. Um, so if we are taking a cautious approach to reintroducing students into the classroom and the schools, I think we should take that same approach um, with our fall sports. Um, also just a nomenclature. I know the term everyone uses is social distancing. I actually think the better term is physical distancing. We do not want our children to be socially distant from one another. Um, we need to maintain physical distance right now. Um, but it's important that they're socially connected. So whether we want to keep the nomenclature of socially distanced or whether we want to choose to go with physical distance, I'll leave that to the uh, administration to decide. Um, also a question about um, some of our teaching staff travel between buildings that have, obviously puts them at higher risk, and it also introduces a risk for those, those buildings and students. Um, will we make efforts to uh, reduce or eliminate entirely travel between buildings? And then also I question how we can have band and vocal music in a safe fashion. I can understand with orchestra, um, but even with putting covers at the end of instruments, it seems to me without the research to back it up, it is potentially high risk. And we know that COVID uh, spread quickly through church choirs. Um, of course, they were in close proximity, but you're also expelling air. So I would just urge us to be cautious in all those situations as well.
I'm sorry to interrupt, that's three minutes.
Thank you, that's it. Um, let me ask one more question. Um, the role for parapros, bus drivers, and other staff while we're virtual? What will the role be? Will those staff members continue to be paid? Obviously, at some point, we want to bring them back when we're in person. So all just questions for you to consider as you revise the plan. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Chris, I'd like to maybe uh, close by, close my comments by flipping around and, and asking you uh, what, what can the board and the community do to um, to support or to better support you and your team in the school in, in implementing these plans? And you know, I'm struck by, you know, we've been at this for four hours and there's probably uh, three hundred questions that have been fired at you, you're away. And everyone who asked, who asks those questions expects an answer from you uh, or from your team. And you know, that's just one example, that's just one, one kind of work package on top of everything else that you're doing. And so I think it's really important for the board to, you know, to, to make sure that we uh, help support the administration and the, and the teachers as much as we can in implementing and refining and implementing this plan. And I think right now, I, I would imagine right now you guys are running on adrenaline uh, and, and stress, adrenaline and cortisol. Uh, but that's going to take you so long, you know? School's going to start, and then there's, you know, we can't have you burn out, so we can't have the team burn out. So, you know, maybe uh, just think about that. Or as, as a board, my colleagues, what we should, I think one, one of the things that we should be doing is just making sure that we're providing the support uh, that Chris and his leadership team needs as they build out this plan and implement the plan.
You know, and that's been uh, the things we can do is really all the things we need to do as a state and a country. We just need to try to slow the spread down and buy ourselves time. And we, we start well, and then we kind of regress and going back and forth, it's, that's the challenge. Our um, I think as a district, we can navigate this and we can support our kids. It's going to need the entire community's support to know we're going to do the best we can do, and then we're going to continuously think how to make it better. And we're all navigating the situation together. And overall, the community's been really good. Even when the draft plan came out, it wasn't some of the backlash that other communities have gotten. Uh, we've, it's been constructive. And if we could just keep it that way, you know that we're all looking out for the same, for everybody's kids and staff to make this work and uh, just know we're all in it together.
So uh, just one question before we close. Um, if community members have additional questions, how would they submit those? Should they use the Let's Chat pod?
They should put it in that survey. Right now, I, we're getting hundreds of emails. We can't navigate all these emails in plan. There's only going to be so many hours in the day. The survey will get that link out as soon as we finish this meeting.
Is that the thought, the thought exchange?
That's where we'll pull it from.
Okay, and that will go out in an email to all families?
Uh, yeah, we'll figure out how to get that out. We need to process the data as soon as possible, so.
Because otherwise, I imagine we will get those emails, and if it's easier through thought exchange, that'd be helpful. Great, and so the next steps are you will work with your team to revise the draft plan, and then it will come back to the board as an action item next Monday, August tenth. And that meeting will be at seven o'clock. Um, should we expect other items on that agenda, or will this be?
I have no idea. I haven't gotten that far.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have some others.
One step at a time. Okay, so does anyone else have any final concluding remark? I think we're all getting tired, and we're managing to finish just before ten o'clock. So I want to thank um, the administration. Um, you've done an amazing job with this plan and the thoughtful comments from all of the community members who um, participated, shared their thoughts um, and spoke during the public participation. And then also just my fellow board members. Um, I am really proud to be a part of this community in this district. So thank you all, and um, sleep well. Um, with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.